I'd like to welcome you all to the May 4th 2020 council meeting. We have Councilman Corbett, Councilman Nern are here in person along with myself, Mayor Phillips. By Zoom, we have Attorney Grady Richardson, Councilman Phillips, Councilman Borman, and we also have Hiram here, but he is, I think he is on the Zoom. And we have Councilwoman Harris by telephone on her speaker. Let's all call, we're going to call this meeting to order and say the pledge of allegiance. Please all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does any member of council have a conflict of interest with the appearance or of conflict or with or, excuse me, I'm sorry, y'all. Does any member of council have a conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest with regards to any of the items? And if so, please state so at this time. Councilman?
No.
No. Ms. Harris?
No.
Councilman Borman?
No.
Councilman Phillips?
No.
Okay. Moving on to the amendment and approval of the draft agenda. First up, I'm going to request that we move the public comments to be in this section, to be the first section after this before we have our COVID-19 discussion. Okay, it's good by me.
Yes, I'm fine.
Councilwoman Harris?
Uh, let me understand, you're moving the public comments before the COVID-19?
Yes, ma'am. I just think that would be the right thing to do. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. Councilman Borman?
Yes, that's right.
Councilman Phillips?
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that being said, we'll move to the public comments. You want to ask them? We're moving to the public comments. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I move, I move, we accept the amended draft agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Mr. Borman?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, moving on to the public comments time. First up, we're going to start with the people that are in the room. They'll be the first ones up. Remember when you come to the mic to state your name, your address, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Ready to go?
Yes.
This is Ray Woj. I'm from 401 39th Street on the island Sunset Beach.
Could you spell your last name?
Yep, W O J S and Jack D isn't Dog A isn't Apple T isn't Thomas.
Thank you.
I'm here again to see if the beach can be opened up. I'm of a personal mind, the beach should never have been closed. We still have a high concentration of people that are walking around on the island on the roadside now. So if the social distancing is the science that's being followed, it sure isn't being operative on the island in any consistent way. There's still construction going on behind my house. I have no personal issue with it. There's no social distancing going on in those three houses being constructed. We've had electrical crews in there. We've had plumbers in there. We've had cement crews in there. They all work close by. They're right behind the house. That isn't working. Everybody's still going to Food Lion. Everybody's still going to CVS. Everybody is still going out to Lowe's, to Home Depot. Some people are going to the hospital. Some people are going back and forth to work. So the idea of social distancing has not been consistent in my mind and following the science of it, the safest place you could possibly be is on the beach itself. That would be if you didn't bottleneck all the other openings and have everybody herd it into one particular or two particular openings. It is the safest spot. There is an emotional well-being that gets tied in context with this, but I think people have seen the illogic of it and there's been, that's why you have seen the protest that has been developing from this. It just doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any science epidemiological sense, and it doesn't make any common sense. That beach needs to be opened. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. Thank you for meeting this evening. My name is Laura Horn. I live at 7492 Preswood Court Southwest, Sunset Beach in San Piper Bay Plantation. I feel that the beach needs to be opened. I don't think it should have been closed to begin with. I am very high on the spectrum of being very vulnerable to this disease. My doctor has even told me when it began, Laura, stay away from it. It could kill you overnight. I have a lot of ailments. The one place that I can go and feel comfortable and not have to fight for my life is on the beach. I can sit out there in the sunshine. I don't have pine trees. I don't have trees around me. I have fresh air. Wearing a mask, social distancing, that could be done, but masks are not needed on that beach because masks actually take away from my lung functions. The only place I have peace is on the beach. And I'm sure there's a lot of us just like this. I have acute asthma. I have the beginnings of COPD. I have a heart condition, and I have a claustrophobic, I don't even know what they call that anymore. I done forgot, but we need the beach open.
Thank you. Next.
Yes, Patrick Tester, T E S T E R. And I'm at 402 39th. And I agree with what's been said already. I didn't think there was a, I didn't think that when the beach was open and the parking was closed down, that it was an unsafe place to be. I did think that the two accesses being open was really the only place that people were grouping, people walking the streets in the neighborhood to get their exercise. There's been much more grouping there. And I'd agree that the beach is probably the safest place for us to be. My wife and I are both physicians. I've been actively involved in treating people in this, in prevention and in treatment throughout the whole pandemic. And, you know, I would say that no matter what happens until we have a vaccine, as much as I'm sure the heart's in the right place for this, it doesn't make a lot of sense. People are going to have to protect themselves. People who are at risk are going to have to probably take even more protection. I'd be happy if people had the option to be on the beach at other times that weren't in peak times, maybe for people have, who have issues. I don't think we're going to be protecting people by just trying to have a little bubble here and keep people off our beach. I don't, I don't think it works. And, and I agree with Ray too, as far as the emotional component to this, as well as the physical exercise component to this, the beach needs to be open. It's, it's good for everybody in every way, and I sure hope that we can make a decision to do that.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Tony Mashrin. I'm at 103, I'm sorry, that's 1203 East Main Street, Sunset Beach. I agree with the first three folks that spoke. I want to say that in the beginning, we did not know much about this virus. China did not provide any information to us, and it was quite scary. It didn't take long before we realized that it is a highly contagious virus compared to others. But now that more testing has been done and we know that the denominator is much greater than we first knew, meaning the number of, total number of people who have been infected with the total number of deaths at the top, the mortality rate really is no different than the seasonal flu. Do we shut down our economy and close people into their homes for the seasonal flu each year? We can't do that. Our country will not survive. I want to talk a little bit about the economic consequences of this. Small businesses are going to suffer. I just saw some data from North Carolina. There are 1 million more people unemployed now that this has happened. In addition to that, some other data, it's estimated that 25 or 20% or so of restaurants will never reopen. Small businesses have a very slim profit margin. They're very difficult to operate. I ran a business for 27 years with up to 12 employees. It's not easy. Certain businesses are going to shut down. People's lives are affected, their livelihoods, their life savings is diminished through this. We have got to have some common sense. We know how to social distance. We know how to protect ourselves. We're not stupid.
Excuse me, you have 30 seconds.
All right. We can handle this and safely get business back, get our beaches open. The safest place to be for, a virus will not survive on the beach. We need to get back to living.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay.
Good evening. My name's Cindy Levine, 1834 East Main Street. I'm super nervous. I really don't like to laugh in front of people, but this is, I think, important enough to try to get over my fear. When this pandemic started as a country and as a community, we were all for, for the most part, happy to stay home, shut down our businesses, separate from our families, give up our liberties, et cetera, to do our part to flatten the curve. The entire goal of this shutdown was to make sure that as this virus has its way with us, the hospitals could care for us, we had enough PPE, and the medical personnel were healthy and capable of caring for the sick with a good treatment protocol. I want to remind everyone tonight that the shutdown is not and was not meant to make sure you, me, or anyone in your community would just never get COVID-19. And if that's your goal, it's unrealistic and it'll never happen. Unfortunately, this virus is here, and we need to start to figure out how to live with it and stop hiding in fear of it. I will not take the time tonight to cite statistics, as one council member so kindly pointed out to me, that each of you are capable of reading your own stats. I will say that if you have that information, then you know that Sunset Beach has had zero cases of COVID-19. Flattening the curve has worked, and we should all be very proud and happy about that. Instead of being happy that all the sacrifices that each of us have made has worked, we are still locked in our homes and we're fighting with each other and deprived of all the things that make us love Sunset Beach. Your continued shutdown is breaking down and dividing our community, our lives, and our livelihoods. I've tried to understand your decision, and I truly just cannot figure it out. I've heard that some of you are worried that if you start to lift the restrictions, there will be an influx of visitors. That may be true. However, your job is not and has not ever been to keep us locked in a bubble. Again, it was to help flatten the curve, which we have done. We as individuals and as a community should continue-
Excuse me, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Have social responsibility to continue to care for one another. Those that are sick and could get sick should still stay quarantined. Those that are elderly and have comorbidities should continue to social distance. Everyone else should be able to move forward to live our lives in all ways, and that includes sitting on a chair in our beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Maria Boccella, B O C C E L L A, 122 Crooked Gully Circle. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll be brief. We need to open the beach for everyone's mental health, for everyone's. I was at the beach every day and walked when we were permitted to only enter in two places and did not see people not observing the social distancing. So anybody who believes that that's the case, and I walked for hours. I rode my bike. I took my bike off the beach, went back and walked. I went to Ocean Isle Beach on Friday, on Saturday, and on Sunday, and I saw no one who was violating social distancing guidelines. So it's time to open the beach, give the people of Sunset Beach the ability to make their own decisions. If people want to stay home, stay home, but don't take our beach away. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Yeah. Okay.
Just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Peggy O'Neil. I live at 680 San Piper Bay in Sunset Beach. I've also had a home on the island since 1991 and have paid taxes since 1991 to this community. And I resent being told that I am not allowed to walk on the beach when I see the golfers driving by my house every day. Nothing against the golfers. That's their prerogative, and they should be able to do that. But we should be able to walk on the beach. We should be treated like people who have responsibility. We've shown we've had responsibility by observing all the quarantine rules, and I think it's about time we open the beach. Like the other lady said, I've been over at Ocean Isle. People are gathering there, being responsible, doing the best they can to social distance. And I think we should be allowed to make decisions for ourself. This is the United States of America. I think we should be started treated like citizens, responsible citizens, because we've already proven that we are. And I think you, I hope we're not just spinning our wheels coming here and letting our voices be heard. I have kind of a feeling you've already made up your mind. I hope that's not true. I hope you will consider the general population of this area who have shown what they are capable of doing and will continue to be responsible. And I think you should be responsible and open the beach now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm Betty Hall Robinson, 420 27th Street. And I would like to just say that I agree with everything the previous speakers have said, and I would, I think it's time to open the beach. We are responsible citizens. We know how to practice social distancing, and it's time to open our beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone there? Okay. That's all the, out of the room back there? Okay. Moving on, we, we received multiple emails. I'm going to read the number that we got, and then I'll discuss what we're going to do here. We have 70 people that have wrote in with their name and address to say to open the beach. We had 16 people who sent emails, but either they did not include their name or they did not include an address, which by the, by the amendments, they're supposed to do to have it read. There are nine people with their name and address that say to keep the, keep the beach closed. On short-term rentals, there are three people that say do not open. There were two that said yes, open. All of those had names and address. With that being said, I'm going to start reading some. I'm going to brief through a lot of them. We have over 100 emails. At three minutes, you're talking five hours before we can even get to anything here. And I think it's quite obvious right now where we're going to. And I'm just going to, like I said, I'm going to breathe through some. I hope it doesn't make you mad. If I do not read yours in full, I am going to make sure that your name is spoken where you, where you can know that your name was brought in to know your opinion counted. All right. Starting off, this will be a Kylie Wesco, 6525 Water Rope Drive, Willow Springs, North Carolina. Thank you for consideration of opening Sunset Beach. I know that many homeowners are in financial troubles with their rentals honored this summer. I think most will be fine with certain precautions being taken place. Because we have a beautiful beach, it's easy to social distance. Next is a Marion Marty, 416 Stroke Drive, Sunset Beach, North Carolina. For a soft reopening of Sunset Beach, here's my suggestion. I suggest the Sunset Beach reentries are open, just like they are during the hurricane. Only residents displaying the reentry permits would be allowed. Have electronic sign-in on the bridge. As I said, I'm going to brief these so we can get through some. David and Lynn Eastburn, 424 32nd Street. We strongly recommend relaxing restrictions on the beach in use. We feel confident the current restrictions have penalized the law-abiding citizens who, and has penalized people that do follow the social distance rule. They're wanting to open it back up. Like I said, all these that I first read will be the opening up. Next, we have a David Lustig. That is 2360 Island Way, Little River. And his is closing the beach to walkers and bikers is not recommended as long as they're using the six-foot distancing. The restrictions on parking limit the number of people to avoid excessive crowds. Please have comments to let people open up to exercise. Next is Kathleen Copeland, 601 Dogwood Drive, Sunset Beach. I would like to encourage the town of Sunset Beach to reopen. We've been coming here since the 70s, and we would like to see it reopen. Kay Sortisstrong, 802 West Main Street, Sunset Beach, North Carolina. Please reopen Sunset with appropriate social distancing and protections for the vulnerable populations. It's time for everyone to get back to work. Keith Hill, 135 Royal Post Road, Sunset Beach. Please open the beaches now. Barbara, Mickey, and Chris Burke, Oak Ridge Plantation. Please open Sunset Beach. We moved here to enjoy. Please have it surely that we can walk and ride bikes. Nancy Fisher, 624 Millsap Lane in Sunset. It's time to open the beaches to all the taxpayers. Jim, I want to say good, Sunset, I mean San Piper Bay. Open the beach, open the park, open town parking, open gyms, open pools. Dana Benson, I'm writing to urge the council mayor to open the beach as a homeowner and taxpayer. I would like to see it back open. Another one addressed to the council member and everything. Robin Whitesale, 1604 East Main Street. I'm writing to encourage the open of the beach. They need to be able to walk on the beach and the surfaces. James Gowen, 411 33rd Street, Sunset Beach. Open Sunset Beach. Bill Page, 407 Fifth Street. I'm full-time resident, able to make my own decisions. I've taken care of my family. I ask that you open the beach. Julie Gorham, 544 San Piper. Open the beach. The beach needs to be open now. The parking needs to be open now. I have been OIB. Kathy Teague McAllister, 421 Third Street. I would like to be able to go to the beach safely. Please consider opening the beach while asking people to social distancing. I felt everyone has done a good job. Please have more walkways open. Tony Bell, 424 Marlin Street. Please open the beach for walking, riding, exercise for town residents and homeowners. This is John, I'm sorry, John and Deb Sink, 430 30th Street. As a taxpaying citizen, I request that you open Sunset Beach for walking, exercise. Open all walkways. Anne Travers, 1410 Inlet Street, Sunset Beach. Please open our beach, even if it's just for homeowners, a soft, soft opening. Scott and Joyce Volmer, 7312 Steel Pond Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. We are non-residence owners. We've been vacationing. We would like to see the beaches open back up due to the curve seems to be flattening. Ed Halls, 1405 Bay Street, Sunset Beach. I respectfully request that you approve opening Sunset Beach. Jay Mortini, maybe, 432 38th Street. I'm writing to request that you open Sunset Beach. I urge council basically to do it now. Jan Gowen, 411 33rd Street. Open Sunset Beach now. Same, same thing. Janet Gowen, I guess she sent two in. Open Sunset Beach now. Kimberly Brandt, 803 Oyster Shell Drive. I should have never lost rights to begin with. I pray that you open the beach now. Tom and Connie Shealy, 63 Abington Place, Southwest, OIB, North Carolina. We've been residents here for 12 years. We love our beach, and they are too, asking to have the beach open. Sharon Fitzgerald, 402 Ocean Ridge Parkway. I'm a resident of Ocean Ridge and would like to see the beach opened. Kathy Callaway, 434 32nd Street. Please open the beaches now. Lee and Debbie Hood, 330 High- Lee and Debbie Hood, 330 High Knob Drive, High Knoll Drive, excuse me, Waukertown, North Carolina. I am emailing the city council Sunset Beach to please open the beach accesses now. Peter, I apologize, Tejan, maybe, 862 Great Egret Circle. I strongly urge you to reopen Sunset Beach now. Tom Barker, 1205 West Main Street. I'm writing to respectfully list, ask that you lift beach restrictions immediately. That's what's, that's basically what it talks about, tells some different facts. Carol O'Neil, 915 Shoreline. I am a permanent resident of Sunset Beach and taxpayer, would like to have the beach open for fresh air. Michael Savawi, maybe, apologize for the last name. Ocean Ridge Plantation. As owner, I ask that Sunset Beach be open for owners and residents now. Brad and Charlene Bullardick, 508 Cromwell Notch, Ocean Isle. We're concerned, we would like to see Sunset Beach open. John Turnercliffe, 6393 Warwick Notch, Ocean Isle Beach. I want to lend my voice to open up Sunset Beach. Tom and Kim Isbrell, 921 Pinewood, Pineclaire Drive, excuse me, Calabash, North Carolina. We are non-paying taxes and please open the beach. Lynn and Beverly Furman, 6634 Ansbrook Plantation, Ocean Isle Beach. We support opening the beach. Brad Hughes, 601 East Main Street. This is not the People's Republic of Sunset Beach. Please make decisions and open the beach up. Margaret Titlenbaum, 106 Discovery Lake, says, as a resident of Sunset Beach, has any thoughts been given to open the beach in phase? If the beach opens with the town enforced social distances and patrol the beach? Danielle Zapawa, 617 Fourth Street. I'm an owner and would love to see the ocean be back open soon. I enjoy walking. Kim and Claude Fall, 1417 Bay Street. We encourage the town to open, reopen Sunset Beach for property owners, limited to walking, biking and running with social distancing. Joey Cabacho, excuse me if that's not the right name, 1207 East Main Street. Dear council, I'm writing, asking basically to support the beach for, and allow us to practice social distancing for sitting, playing games and exercising. Joe Kaboshka, the same name, apologize for the pronunciation, 1207 East Main Street. I am writing to ask up for, ask for the beaches to be back open. And he asked that the streets coming in and going out, the walkways be numbered different for people to be able to go in and out on. Jenny Quagleygli, 6609 Spencer Place, Ocean Isle. I request, I'm going to read my email. Thank you for replying. This just gives the thing about AG Barbara, just asking to please open the beach. Angela Kuchaba, again, apologize for the pronunciation. I'm sure that's not it. 1207 East Main Street. She has a long letter with a lot of different facts and things up on here about cases and all. When it comes to the end, it just says that I believe Sunset Beaches can come together as a community. Please make safe choices in opening our beach back. I believe in a positive one and the public park also. The rest of it's just fact stuff about the COVID. Next up is Donald Francino, Town of Clarksville, New York, City, New York, asking to open the beach. He would propose that the walkways be open and for spacing them out for in and out. Susan Wheeler, the 63, excuse me, 635 Magnolia. Talking about cases and then asking for our beach to be open where people can start enjoying. We have Karen Soderstorm, 802 West Main Street, Sunset Beach. Please reopen Sunset Beach. David Walker, 422 40th Street. My husband and I request that you open the beach for walking and exercise. Kimberly Brandt, I think I've already read one of those, but this one just again says please open the beach. It is 803 Oyster Shell Drive. Here's another one from, this is actually Henry Brandt, 803 Oyster Bed Shire, just asking for the beach to be back open. 518 Magnolia is a Ron Easton. He's asking for the beach to be open due to Home Depot being open. John Welshofer, again, I apologize for the name, 1307 Canal Street. He is virtually sending something that's printed with a whole, whole bunch of things, but he is in favor of opening the beach. Thomas Baldwin, he is at 464 Egret, Egret Drive in Sea Trail area. He is asking that the beach be opened. He's in favor of people wearing face masks and for the public ways, walkways to be open to and from. Open it up for exercise. Charles and Linda Mays, 908 Resort Circle, asking for the beach to please be open to allow parking. Dr. Benjamin Levine and Cindy Levine, I think Ms. Levine, Levine spoke, 1834 East Main Street, again, asking for the beach to be open and the park. Lauren Ramsey, 409 Water Oak Wind, Southwest, asking for the beach to be open, maintaining the six-foot, have the reentries, that it may be useful to have reentries for the citizens and for the homeowners. Greg Caldwell, 323 Caldwell, 323 Crooked Gully. Again, opening the beach up immediately, the parks and businesses. Ms. Gina Young, 432 Cell Fish. She's asking that we reopen Sunset Beach for walking, biking, sitting, reading. Rest of it's just different records and stuff from other beaches. We got a Dr. Tony Marshareen and a Mr. Dale H. Palloni, 1203 East Main Street. Again, it's just using a bunch of things, cases and different, different areas. Please, please open the beach in the phase one, open beach and parks, allow groups of 10 or less. Brian and Martha Marsh, 936 Winfield, Winfield Drive. Asking for the beach to be open. Of course, it gives a lot of different information about numbers and things. Appreciate if you open Sunset Beach back up in a safely manner. Charles Winter, 216 Old Oak Lane. He is, is there still a restriction on short terms? We think they should be allowed once all the beach is open. Ask about businesses, why golf courses and stuff are opening. Open the beach. We have David Dance, 6676 West Spencer Place, Ocean Ridge, asking, asking to open the beach. Says he's went to Home Depot and all that, but opening the beach and business. Laura Moore, 433 Sixth Street. Urge that you start phase one, open beaches and parks, allow 10 or less. Kirby Bowers, 524 Great Oak Circle. He has suggestions that you follow the guidance of the governor, consider opening beaches for walking, running and biking. Consider some parking. Open several walkways. Continue to restrict short vacation rentals. Next is Andy and Rob Ream, Charlotte, North Carolina and Sunset Beach. They have a house at 910 Resort Circle and they want Sunset Beach open for walking, bike riding, open and open to people for sitting and swimming. Open Sunset Beach for everyone. Russell and Sonia Shewayhart, 413 Dolphin Street. Again, I apologize for the name. Wanting the beach back open. There's no reason not to allow you to sit. Andrew Ream, 908 Resort Circle, which I think it must be her husband, same exact email, wanting to open the beach. Gary and Pam Stewart, 1507 East Main, asking that you open the beach with restrictions, keep parking closed, keep the gazebo light closed, keep moving, not people hanging around walking and joining, no chairs at this time, social distancing, allow rentals after government's orders are lifted. Joyce Gibb. Carolina Shores, I can't, I think it says 2 Midron Court. Open the beach. Jennifer Kirkbride, and she again is asking that we open the beach. Sean Whitesel, 1608 East, East Main. Please open the beach. Rest of it's just some information about different things. Next is Carol Rosenberg, 1304 Canal Street, asking that the beaches be open. Next is the, next is the ones that had no names or no addresses. The ones that have a name, I'm just going to read their name right quick so they'll know that they did get read. Brooklyn Kennedy. Gina Stantley. Brian Hungerford. A D Craig. John Brolneck. Gina Young. Jenna Camina. Tracy Haggard. Dana Dez. Karen Zasut. Laura Horn. I think it says Timberly. I'm not, I can't really understand it. And this is a Dawn. And then we have Amy Ann Bokelman. Tina Ritter. And Chris Johnson. And all these are in favor of opening the beach, but they have no name and address. That's why we couldn't read them. Next up, we're going to go to the keep the beaches closed. Gailey Strickland, please keep the vote, please keep the votes, excuse me, please keep the beach closed during the COVID. As it's going now, that's from a Gailey and Flo Strickland, 1135 Park Road Unit. Robin Alardi, maybe, 1310 Canal Street. As a full-time resident, we enjoy walking the beach. We ask, when you do open it up, to please have multiple walkways. Nina Marabel. She's asking that it not be open at this time. And there's just a bunch of different questions and things on here, but nothing other than, you know, she's insinuating, keep it closed. Thomas Vincent, he asked that you take it slow and to follow the guidelines. I'm sorry, and Mr. Vincent's address, I apologize, was 422 36th Street. Tina Ritter at 834 Dogwood is asking that she keep, keep it closed for right now. Marilyn Shimadale, maybe, from Austin, Texas. This one, I'm going to read this one here in a minute because this has actually got something else and it is not, it must have gotten the wrong one. This is Mrs. Karen Joseph, 915 Sandpiper, Sandpiper. All that says is, can you please? I want to thank the staff for keeping it closed. Continue to put our health and safety first. Elaine Wright, 629 Mills Slap, Mills Loop Lane. I would like to thank council for keeping it closed. That's basically all that says. Maryam Marks, 1004 East Main Street. Please consider keeping it closed to at least June. Next up, we go to, this is keep short-term rentals closed. Says his neighbor town start opening theirs back up. It's got a bunch of statistics. It's just asking that you keep the, the short terms closed. That was from a Herb Tingler, 711 Oyster Bay Drive. Next is a Tom Thomas, realizing that you'll have this thing. I ask about our local food supply. We're having huge shortages. Ask that you wait before you open. And a Danny Hardy, 1306 Canal Drive, asking that you don't open and terminate short-term rentals for the time to make steps. This is for opening short-term rentals. Suzanne and Richard Smith, it just short, says Sunset Beach is losing too much revenue. And then we have a Tony and Patricia Del Duca from 1303 and 1606 Canal. It just says that they're losing, losing rent and would like to see it opened as soon as possible. This next message is not really about opening or closing. It is someone named Marilyn Scrimadale from Austin, Texas. I'm not a resident, been vacationing for 20 years. Our family's coming to Sunset Beach. My parents have paid over $5,500 for a two-week vacation. The only way they can get their money back is if rentals are prohibited. I am concerned about them and your residents. The rental is from Sunset Properties, 5923. My family's choice is that if you open the beach and allow rentals, we're either throwing away $6,000 or go to the beach and a house from 14 people from two states. Basically, they're saying they have a lot of people coming in from different areas and they just don't feel that it's appropriate for them to come through at this time. They are still quarantining where they're at. This one are, these are just ones I think that are basic, not about the open or close. Caramel Zets, 402 Second Street. I want to commend the council for what is going on through the governor's orders. And it just says, thank you for keeping the numbers down. We got a Dave Marsland, 910 Oyster Point. He goes on to say that he has been in the grocery store and sees that it's already shorted and would like to just consider implementing a safe plan to put Sunset Beach back to going. Ray and Cynthia Blankenship, 419 Water Oak Winds. Asking that you be wise in opening and not going forward with the proposed projects and, I'm, excuse me, let me read this one again because this is something totally off. Thank you for keeping us safe during these times. We come, we comment, we comment, you're not letting political or public pressure force you into making decisions. The county's numbers are low. Stay at the point if you want to open. You know what people will do in these areas. We feel that businesses and workers are suffering, but it's time to be safe during this, it's time to be safe trying to go through these times of illnesses and deaths. And I commend you, the town, for the wise decision regarding not going forward with the proposed budget and tax increase. Fran Thomas, 518 Twisted Oak. Would like to thank you for the decisions that you make. Whatever decisions you make, not everybody will be happy. If the beach is open by Memorial Day, howling influx visitors to control the coronavirus, coronavirus. I would like to be able to walk the beach and in the park, however, safety comes first. This is from Michelle Steiner, 653 Beddington Circle, Mayhem or Manhame, Pennsylvania. I live in Pennsylvania. We're scheduled to come in June, but we are canceling due to people, our family from different parts of the United States, especially some that are in hard-hit areas. We're asking that we can get a refund from Sunset Beach property due to our COVID and being where we would not like to bring, possibly bring virus into your town. And lastly, here, as far as this part goes, we do have some more public comments that'll be read at the end, seeing as that they do not pretend to our agenda. This is from Rich Sorato. 517 Twisted Oak Lane, Sunset Beach. It is wish to thank Finance Director Tara Drop and the council for eliminating many, many expenditures that were on the budget this year due to what's going on. This pandemic wakes us up and we're doing bad. Uh this pandemic wakes us up, and we're doing basic service, and you're doing, basically doing the best we can and doing the right things, thank you. He has something about employee bonuses that. They come in the budget for like twenty-seven thousand dollars, wants that to be looked at before we finalize things, which I'm, I'm. I know we'll be having a public comment time, and I know those questions can be addressed most, most option at the end, he has some suggestions. About merit systems. And about canceling employee bonus programs. He has a suggestion about perform a fire fee financialist analysis, decisions made without any formal analysis or just. Less facts. And I will put this one in to when we have the public comments, I will save this, and maybe he would like to read that at that time or something like that, in all due respect. With that being said, that is all the. Comments that were sent in, like I said, it was over a hundred, that if I'm not mistaken, we had about ten from the back room. We will now move on to the COVID nineteen. State of emergency dec- um, discussion and action with the council. I will open up the floor, we'll start on the screen with Zoom, uh Councilman Boorman. We would like to hear your, your comments and suggestions and ideas, sir.
Uh, okay, let me start by saying, um, we've all heard the, the voice of the residents. Personally, myself, I have been following the, the situation, um, as we see in the state and the county. Outside the state. I think there's still reason for concern. There's a lot of people saying, uh, that we're out of the woods, and I think. That the, the data for Sunset Beach is certainly encouraging, and I wouldn't want to see that change. The residents should, should know that the decisions that we made. Uh with the state of emergency and the closure of the beach. Was done with the safety of the residents in mind. Um, there was no intention to, to, um. Create a situation that was worse than the virus itself. There were many, many unknowns at the time, and we were trying to, to do what we thought was right, and speaking for myself personally, anyway. Um, however, having said that, I do think that there's room for some change here to what we had been doing. Um, I do believe that. We could relax the, the, the closure of the beach to allow for. Uh for exercise, running, walking, things of that nature. Um, I do think that there's some, some merit to the suggestions. For the, the one-way walkways to help. Uh, uh, keep people. More separated. I'm not so sure that that will work. When I see what's happened in the supermarkets and things where they've tried to, to create one-way aisles, uh, it doesn't seem like that's been. Um, very effective, a lot of people don't. Seem to know what's the right thing to do, or they don't. Pay attention to the signage, so I don't know that that's something that we can enforce, but I do think it's a good idea. One of my concerns about opening the beach is the enforcement of the rules for social distancing. And I know a lot of people have said that they've been on the beach and their observations are that. Uh, that there were, uh, there was no one that wasn't social distancing. Um, however, I think that we need to be. Very vigilant in that area, um, in spite of, of. What people may think, I think that there's still reason to be concerned and that we must follow social distancing protocols. Um, so there needs to be an enforcement aspect to that, and I think, um. Uh, people need to be aware that if they aren't social distancing, or if there's other. Things that they aren't following such as, um, such as parking and, and the things of that nature. Uh, uh, that there will be repercussions. Speaking about parking, I think initially. Uh, we should keep the parking situation as it is now. That all the, the public parking should be closed, and I think we need to see how things go. Um, we will have another opportunity to make some changes at the next council meeting on the nineteenth, I believe. Um, so as far as parking goes, I think we should keep it the way it is. For rentals, I believe that, um, that's another thing that we should. Uh, I take a pause on still. Um, I know people would like to have things opened by Memorial Day. Uh, that that's a big weekend from the rental business. I think we can consider that. Uh, the, the rental companies I know need to have a target. And I'd like to hear what, what the rest of the council members think, I'm. Very cautious about opening the rentals, but I'm. Willing to listen to other arguments about it. Uh, the rentals, uh, aside from the rentals, I think. That's pretty much the points that I wanted to make. Oh, uh, there is one other point that one of the residents raised. Uh, just today in an email, uh, having to do with Bird Island. Uh, we need to be aware that, uh, Bird Island is not part of Sunset Beach, it is a state preserve. And the state has mandated that that's closed. So if we do open the beaches, I think people need to be aware that. Uh, that, uh, Bird Island is. We're not opening Bird Island, that that's something that the state has, has to relax the, the mandate on. And I think that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Phillips, you'll be up next, please.
Uh, hello, everyone. Um, for the most part, I agree with Tom, I think that the beaches should be opened up for exercise, uh, the one-way walkway seems like a great idea to me as well, even though it might be difficult to enforce. Um, I think if we can get the majority of people to comply, that would, that would help with that situation, so. From my perspective, the purpose of the state emergencies. Were to initially, as some have said, flatten the curve and not overwhelm our hospital systems. From what I can tell, any of the day that we've seen and get, our hospitals are not, um, in jeopardy at this time, uh, some of the other amendments were put in place to. Try to stop a flood of people, um, from coming to the area from areas with a higher, um, infection rate than what we were seeing. Um, back at that time, the information that I was looking at. And some of the models was saying up to, uh, potentially two thousand mortalities in the state of North Carolina per day. Uh, this is a model that, uh, South Carolina Department of Health and, uh, Human Control or whatever, um, puts on their website. Uh, daily, so they're using that model for their projections. Um, this same model, um, has been updated as of the twenty-ninth of last month to an estimate of thirty cases per day within the state. To go over some of the statistics that other people were mentioning, there are approximately twelve hundred cases in North Carolina that are documented. Um, that's one-tenth of one percent of the population. And up until recently, I believe, the only people being tested were those that were in serious condition and had to go to the hospital. So if you're looking at one-tenth of one percent of the population being tested. And then of that, um, when you look at the mortality rates that were there. As more testing is done, the yes, the cases are going to continue to rise, but the mortality rate in turn will be lower. We'd all like to have testing throughout the community and test everybody that's out there, that's just not possible, and I don't foresee that anytime in the near future. So as stated, you know, as more tests are done. Back on April fifteenth, um, within the state of North Carolina, seventeen percent of the population tested positive, or seventeen percent of the people that were tested were positive. Today, that number's six percent, so as more testing is being done, we're showing that there's less percentage of the population that's testing positive. So that's some of the, the background statistics that I'm looking at. One of my concerns, um, some of the beaches I feel nearest have opened up to rentals too early. I, I did make a trip over to Navy Beach this weekend on Sunday, and. I could see that a lot of the rental spaces and properties were extremely full. I then went back today and looked at those same properties and they had dropped, so. What the fear of is, and I think a lot of these members on council would share this, although I don't want to speak for them, is that we create a situation where we're getting weekend visitors and an influx. Um, thus stressing, you know, our resources and things of that nature. That being said. My position, um, regarding some of the ordinance in place was, I would recommend that we. Open the beach and the park for exercise as soon as we can, do one-way accesses. The handicap accesses, in my opinion, should be closed, except for those that are handicapped. And then I would also lift the parking restrictions at this time. Um, like a lot of folks, I've been out occasionally and I've seen. How the community's responding to this, and I feel that those are gonna be. People are gonna respond how they're gonna respond, and it can only be regulated so much. So one thought I've had is it's very interesting, some people may point out that I'm remotely attending this meeting. And I'm also advocating to open things up a little bit more potentially than others. That's because that's my personal level of comfort with this at this time. And so as citizens, even though that's my comfort level, I should not be able to dictate my comfort level upon other people, so. At some level, um, the fact that I don't think this, uh, disease is going away anytime soon. It's all gonna eventually come down to personal responsibility on how we handle it, and I think we should, uh. Again, move forward a little bit, um, with opening the beaches up for exercise and the park for exercise and the parking. I'm not ready to relax the restrictions on short-term rentals. Um, I would like to hear what the governor has to say on the eighth before any decisions regarding that and or, um. Opening up beach restrictions further for relaxation, fishing, et cetera, things of that nature. Um, I don't think that considering the environment that we're in. Um, they would be prudent to wait until the nineteenth before we consider any of these other decisions, um, I would, I would consider maybe having a meeting. Sometime the week of the eleventh, um, as things change and there's more data comes in, if we see a spike in data after some of these different beaches have opened up, I think we might have to reconsider. But I guess those are basically, basically my viewpoints on that. Um, for target date for the rentals, um, I would like to see a target date of May fifteenth, um, to open up short-term rentals. Um, but more importantly than that, um. If there's barring anything like that, any other major spike in cases or mortality. Um, I would certainly want to try to be open by the twenty-first or twenty-second to give the agencies and the owners an opportunity to start to plan ahead. And that's pretty much it for me.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Phillips. We'll now go remotely to. Councilwoman Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I believe that, um. It's time that we should do, start, uh, doing some things with our beach. And with our park, but I believe that we should do it in a slow, careful manner. I think the beach should be opened for exercising, um, walking, that type of thing only. And I agree that the. One-way access, uh, areas is a good idea. And maybe not everybody will comply with it, but, but certainly they would, we would have more compliance than if we did not make the walkways one-way. I, I believe the park, uh, should be opened for exercise. Only and also social distancing, as well as social distancing on the beach. Uh, parking on the beach, uh, should not be opened at this time, I think we need to wait a little longer. And see how this slow reopening goes before we, uh, open parking. For the short-term. Rentals, I think we need to wait a little longer on that, um. Possibly the week before Memorial Day, but again, we have a meeting prior to that, and I, I. I would prefer that we. Not open short-term rentals at this time. Also, um. I. I have a concern about Bird Island. Uh, I'm wondering if, um, someone maybe Hiram or one of us could work with Hope Sutton of the Bird Island Reservation. People to, uh, at least, uh, put some kind of notice up that, uh, the Bird Island Conservation Reserve is closed. And, uh, I'm not sure that everyone is aware of where it now starts. It starts at the property line of the, uh, of the last oceanfront property on the west end, so it is very close. Uh, and it is closed by the state's direction, that is not our decision, it is the state's decision. So I would, I would like to see us make some contact with the Bird Island people to, to at least get notice up that. What their procedures are. And I think. Uh, I think that's pretty much it, I agree with everything that both Councilman Boorman and Councilman Phillips, um, stated.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Harris, Councilwoman Harris.
But, Mr. Mayor, real quick, may I? Um, just want to speak on the Bird Island thing real quick.
Sir.
Uh, Hope Sutton contacted me today, they are. Bird Island's one of the three preserves that are closed right now, um, they are waiting for, uh, um, to understand what the governor's gonna say later this week before they make another decision on that, so we're in contact with them. Uh, about this, um, right now, plus some volunteers are still checking on some of the projects out there. Um, we can easily try to find some signage, that's not an issue, the issue's gonna be that they may open with by the end of the week. So we're waiting to hear back from them to see if that's what they're gonna do after the governor makes his decision later this week. Um, but we can go ahead and be prepared to, to put a little notice sign out, um, on that one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, question for clarification.
Thank you, Hiram.
Yes, ma'am.
Question for a clarification, um, when we're saying it's closed from the end of the, the built-up area. Is the beach strand also closed, or is it just the dunes and then back inland from the dunes?
You, you're allowed, you're allowed to walk in the water.
It, it's another low tide kind of, or under high tide situation. Is my understanding.
Not, not in the dunes at all, and not on the dry sand.
But if you're, if you're walking at low tide, can you walk where the tide had already come up earlier than in the day? Or do you have to physically be in water when you're walking out that way?
That was not clear to me when I read the, the directive from the, from the, from the state as to what was allowed. Um, it was clear, though, certainly no dry sand, no dunes, no going up to the Bird Island mailbox, et cetera.
I can always double-check with Ms. Sutton, but it's my understanding it's below high tide. So yes, what you're saying is the wet sand. From my understanding was able to be walked upon, but not all the way down to.
So people could go down to the inlet.
It's my understanding.
If, if they stay off the dry sand close to the dunes.
Let me double-check with Ms. Sutton.
Thank you, just to be clear.
All right, thanks. Everybody done? You're done, Ms. Harris?
I am.
Okay, moving on, Councilman Nern, you have the floor?
Thank you. First, my, my biggest concern is the safety of the residents of Sunset Beach. We have no. COVID nineteen cases in Sunset Beach. There are four cases. In Calabash and Carolina Shores. Three in Ocean Isle Beach and six in Ash, uh, I won't go any farther than that, I think. We have to look to what's, uh, right around us. I'd like to thank everybody that sent in emails, there were some very good comments and some encouraging emails. And, and they were all appreciated. I do, uh. There were some that were threatening. And. Even two people has suggested we were getting some kind of. Financial reward or kickback for what we were doing. My suggestions are. My suggestions are that we open the beach strand on Wednesday, May the fifth, at twelve noon. We need to give Public Works time to remove the barricades. The beach would be open for exercise only, no sitting. I'm okay if we resume sitting or laying out on May the eighth or eleventh. I'd like to see strict enforcement until May fifth at noon. And I don't like, and it's ridiculous, "Oh, really? I didn't know."
Councilman Nern, I just, you said May the fifth, which is tomorrow?
I'm sorry. I said May, May the eighth or the eleventh.
I'm talking about when you said you wanted to see strict, strict restrictions, you said.
Well, until, that would be until May fifth at noon. Today's Monday.
Yeah, tomorrow.
The sixth. I'm sorry, Wednesday is the sixth.
Just wanted to make sure it's clarified.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing that. And I'd be okay if we resume sitting or laying out on May eighth or eleventh. I'd like to see strict enforcement of the people on the beach until May the sixth, and ignorance of the law is no excuse. I think the parking, parking ban will stay in effect until May eleventh. We should always, we should also return the restrooms to the beach at that time. We need time to readjust. I'd also like to give our residents some time before we are inundated with guests from other areas. Short-term rentals. We do need to give the rental companies time to notify the property owners and guests. We can resume rental on Friday, May the fifteenth. I don't think there are many rentals booked during that week, so it would be a sort of a break-in period. Is that, it is the week before Memorial Day. And we should reopen the park on the same schedule with the same, same restrictions as the beach. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And Councilman Corbett, you're the next one?
Thank you very much. I'll try not to repeat too much. I agree in principle with generally everything my fellow council members have said. The part that I've big concerned all the way through here has been the social well-being and safety of our citizens, and that remains to be the, the concern. How do we go about moving on a path to normalcy in a way that protects everybody? I think the idea that I've heard expressed here today, and I agree with, is that we have a phased approach. I think we need to have probably some discussion on, on what actually the phases are. But I think we are, in principle, agreeing together. I think a key part of this is going to be what the governor says on May eighth. As late as this afternoon, his press statements indicated that he was moving in the direction of declaring that we start Phase One of his three-phase plan, which reduces some of the restrictions. Key part in that is, is that the stay-at-home continues with the idea that there's more commercial activity that can be done, and so there would be more opportunities to, to get out. But the social distancing in those aspects, the groups no more than ten still remain in effect. He said reopen parks, and that comes into line with what we can do. But he also said that the local emergency orders with more restrictive measures may remain in place, and that's kind of what we're discussion, discussing here as we go. I agree that we should completely open our beach in terms of the beach being open with exercise-only, walking, running, biking, surfing. No chairs, no equipment, no fishing, no standing around. I think we could let children run around playing stand as long as the parents don't just settle in watching, but then stay up and alert and walking around their kids, because when we open the beach, that'll be part of it. I think we should do it this week. Whether we do it the fifth or the sixth, I think depends primarily on when our DPW can open up the walkways and, and whether it's feasible to mark walkways alternating one way or the other. And our two ADA-compliant walkways, I agree, should be ADA-access only. Is, is that manageable, sort of?
Signage-wise, it'd be sort of harder, just round it up, to get signs made real, real quick, and get them, to make them one-way. Or we can ask the citizens that every even street, you go down, and every odd street, you come back. We can ask the citizens to do that. If you're not, if, if, if it's an even street, you go down to the beach. If you're an odd street, you come back to Main Street.
That, that works until you get up on the east end.
Once you get down to the other end, they're a little bit further out, but they're all the same. But that's, we can do that, well, them streets, the other streets on the east end, we can try to make signs of the best, best, the fastest way we can to mark them.
Okay. Would that be something you could accomplish tomorrow or accomplish on Wednesday?
I can get that done tomorrow. Get the signs. There's only like five or six, six, maybe six.
Okay. Well, the, the idea would be, is a date that you could physically do this. We don't want people crawling over the, over the walkways and the barricades. But I think we should open it up with the limitations as, as a start.
But like Charlie said, if, if, Councilman Nern said, if we could do it Wednesday, midday, open everything, give me time to get all the barricades off tomorrow, everything ready to go in place, and have it ready to go for Wednesday, midday, yes, I can do that.
Does it need to be Wednesday midday, or would you feel comfortable doing it Wednesday morning? Do you think you could have it all done tomorrow, where we could open it up for people to start walking and stuff? I know a lot of people like to work, walk in the morning. Would that be feasible, or would it be better to wait till around twelve? What's, what's your suggestion, since you're the one who'd be dealing with this stuff?
I would have to at least have a day.
Okay.
That's a little cushion, because there's supposed to be some weather coming in here tomorrow, rain. That's supposed to come in tomorrow. I don't, the weather permitting. That's the reason why I say Wednesday midday would give me a good chance.
So your suggestion for us to, to consider would be twelve o'clock on Wednesday?
Yes.
That's, that'll give us something to work off of.
Because the, the weather, I don't know what, what the weather's gonna be.
Yes, sir. Understood.
No, we'll also have the issue that as soon as one board comes down, people are gonna start flooding the beach.
Yes.
So...
I'm sorry, what was that?
As soon as one of the barricades comes down, people will start going to the beach, regardless of when it's officially open, so...
That's, that's why we have enforcement.
I know, I'm just making sure that the public is aware that until it's officially open, regardless if the accesses are blocked off or not, they will be, you know, fine.
The, the, the one theme that did come out in the great number of emails where comments were was that, for the most part, our citizens can comply with the rules, even if they don't like them. And if we're asking them to stay off the beach until noon on Wednesday, I don't think that's being unreasonable, especially since we're gonna have, supposed to have rain parts of Tuesday and parts of Wednesday. Thank you, Dustin. The, the sort of related, I think, also at the same time, is, is the governor mentioned in his Phase One. And again, I'm kind of working on the assumption that Phase One for him begins on, on Friday and, and will last at least two weeks, as his plan has said. Phase Two doesn't begin until two or three weeks afterwards, assuming everything is working smoothly. But I think it would be a good time to open up the park, have social distancing. If we can encourage people to walk in the same direction, such as counterclockwise, that would be fine. But I think we probably also should open the parking for, for the, the parking lot for the park. And, and again, I'm looking at midday Wednesday as an opportunity to do that, if, if, if the council agrees to do so. Some of the other issues, no parking. I think we should continue the no parking in the right-of-ways and in the public lots, lots. That's the main action that we have that can limit or kind of control the numbers of people who try to flood into the beach. And at the beginning, when we're trying to do a smooth phased-in approach, I think that's important. That's probably where people are parking is the easiest thing to enforce. We have, and my understanding is that we do not have any controls over the private parking lots, such as the three POA parking lots and, and the pier parking lot, correct?
Yeah, we won't be able to keep those closed.
Yeah. And, and so the idea is not keeping those closed. They would be there, so some of the, some of the citizens off, off-island would have a place and access to go. And the pier is a private business, and if they choose to cha, charge parking for that, you know, I think that, that's, there's nothing we can do about that, but we can't tell them to close. But I think we should maintain those limitations. Now, I think those limitations are something that we should continue, at least through our next meeting on the nineteenth of April, so we can make a good assessment of how well everything's working. Once we take the parking away.
Nineteenth of May.
I'm sorry, nineteenth of May, thank you. Once we open up parking, then the barn door is completely open, and, and so that's the one real tool that we have to, to slow things down. I think we should look at short-term rentals as setting a date. I would be comfortable in this phased approach to, to say, as long as the governor does put us into Phase One, set the twenty-second of May, right before Memorial Day, so, so that the rental properties can get their Memorial Day weekend. I have to think about whether, from Councilman Phillips' suggestion on the fifteenth, I think that's a little bit too aggressive, too early until we see what happens, but we, something we, all of these things are things that we should be talking about. And I think that the nineteenth of May should also be the time that we, at our meeting then, is the time that we discuss non-exercise activity, such as sitting on the beach, chairs, cabanas, umbrellas, and things like that, going back onto the beach. Again, going with a phased approach. I have a question about when we put the bathrooms back on the beach, both in terms of the ability to do that, and the bathrooms are set up now that they get cleaned twice a day during the season. You know, and, and we really don't have the resources at this time to, you know, keep somebody in there keeping them clean all the time, and those would be the first place that we, we have unhealthy environment, unhealthy situations. So I think we need to get some expert opinion in terms of when we should go ahead and, and take care of those things. Let me check my notes here.
Mr. Mayor?
Wait, wait just a second, Jen, let him finish reading, and we'll come back to you, ma'am.
I, I think at, at this point, I've, I've said enough. We've got plenty of stuff here to talk about how we want to do and, and, and kind of lock in into a phased plan. But I think we all kind of agree that a phased plan, just discussing what's in each phase and how long it takes, is the objective right now.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Councilwoman Harris, you had something you need to say?
Well, no, I, I thought that John was waiting for, for an answer to his question. But, but while I have the floor, I do agree with, with, with Councilman Corbett on, on all of the issues he has raised. I agree with the May twenty-second for opening the short-term rentals, and also on the restrooms. I kind of believe we need to keep those closed for the time being.
Any, anything else, Councilwoman Harris?
That's it.
Okay. Hiram, go ahead.
Oh, real quick, I was gonna see if we wanted to look, if Attorney Richardson had anything to add or to discuss with this, yes, no?
I don't have any legal concerns at this point. I'm just trying to listen to everybody's general consensus, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I can help you formulate a motion whenever it comes to that.
All right. The, the second thing I want to bring up, bathrooms. There's some work that's supposed to be done to one of them. Needs to be wired up, things like that. The, the new one. But we can't keep those clean. It, it's, it's not gonna be possible. The moment it's clean, the, the first time it gets used, it's not clean anymore. I mean, I know that's common sense, but it gets cleaned in the morning, it gets cleaned in the evening. And that's, that's a whole day of germ breeding that, that we will not be able to control, and, and a use-it-your-own-risk mentality of it, I don't agree with personally. I think it's best to hold off on the restrooms until we have a, a better understanding of where social distancing is gonna go from there. As the governor goes through his phases and starts releasing the number, the groups of people that can congregate, he'll do that as the, the curve gets flatter and flatter and cases get, you know, less and less. So my recommendation is, if you're gonna look, look at a date for bathrooms, I'd wait till after the nineteenth meeting to discuss that.
Can I, just to, to tie into that process, when you, when you think about who is going to be looking for restrooms, it's going to be the people who don't have a place to park. The, the residents, the renters, when we get short-term renters, the people from the POA parking lots or the pier, you know, all have access to a restroom. It's, it's the folks that come in and who would be using the right-of-way parking and the public parking areas who would be the ones that wouldn't have access. And, and, you know, sort of in an indirect way, that adds into, to my argument why we should not be in too big of a hurry to raise the parking restrictions.
Enough.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
The, the restrooms are cleaned morning and evening. How about, we're gonna clean them in the morning. How about we clean them, say, at one or two in the afternoon? I think they're cleaned right around seven in the morning. Is that correct?
When's their evening clean? Three or four, right? Yeah, I mean, when I say evening, I mean
Well, or early.
Late afternoon, early, yeah.
Well, I, I, I think we should move that back a little bit till one or two o'clock. Well, the days are longer. I don't know how much use the restrooms will get. But I don't think we should clean them later in the evening and then, then again in the morning. I think it's a waste of time and effort.
And I, I know that the restroom topic's still there, but the other thing that no one's brought up that I thought maybe if y'all want to keep discussing this, special events.
I've got that to ask here in just a second on questions.
The, the governor's Phase One plan still calls for ten people in a gathering, and it's the last for two to three weeks when he implements it. His Phase Two plan does not indicate what that number will be increased to, but I do not imagine it will go to above a hundred people in all our special events. Was it awful? Oh, I'm sorry. Apparently, I'm not being heard. Okay. I'll start over.
Yes, sir.
Social distancing with special events, Phase One, is still ten people, six feet apart, for two to three weeks after it gets implemented. apart, um, for two to three weeks after it gets implemented. Phase two and phase three do not indicate what numbers they will be increasing to, but I do not believe it's gonna be increased to more than 100 people. All of our events pull in more than 100 people. With that being said, the governor also doesn't know how long phase three will last. It's basically, in one of his speeches, he says the new norm, um, until there's no more need for social distancing. Uh, I would actually recommend, unpopularly, that we just cancel special events through the summer. Because I can't guarantee that we'll ha- you know, we're not gonna be able to have someone out there clicking on more people that go into the park or the concerts. It's, it's a lot of people milling about. If you just take even, you know, the Thursday market, uh, last year's Monday market had a ton of people walking through and everybody was clustered. Uh, Thursday market's ridiculously busy. It's, in my opinion, it's unhealthy and it's unsafe. So I think the, the air on the side of caution on this part would be to not allow special events for the remainder of this fiscal year. I mean, not this fiscal year, but this calendar year.
So then that would mean the markets, the, the concerts?
Yes.
Sunset at Sunset?
Like I said, yeah. Um, unpopularly, this, my recommendation, now, that's just my recommendation. If we know better in August, what August looks like, um, I don't know. Uh, I do know, based on the governor's plan, phase two is, uh, two to three weeks after phase one. Phase three is four to six weeks after phase two, and that's assuming they don't get extended. Um, that puts us into July easily to be out of phase three, or to, to implement phase three. And like I said, we won't know what those numbers of people are allowed to be gathered, and that's gonna be a state order, not a local order.
I'm, uh, I'm fine with canceling the concerts this year. The more popular bands, it's packed there. Uh, no way to social distance in that space. Um, the markets, uh, I, I go every Thursday and, and, uh, it's, you can't get down the walkways a lot of times. So, um, as much as I like the market, um, I'm okay if we cancel for the summer or for the rest of the calendar year. Sunset at Sunset? Well, you can't social distance there. Maybe in, you know, it takes so much planning, uh, lining up vendors and entertainment and everything. And, and I don't know if the Sunset at Sunset Committee can pull it off if you gave them the okay to have it in August. So, as much as it hurts me, uh, I think we ought to go ahead and consider closing, closing that also.
And if, if I can add real quick, I mean, pulling these events together, and if we just keep doing this piecemeal from meeting to meeting, these, these event coordinators aren't gonna be able to make a decision. I mean, like I said, that's my recommendation. If y'all wanna just say none, none through May or June, that may still meet the governor's criteria. We don't know what he's gonna do yet, and we could reevaluate each time he does a phase. It's just, I know how hard it is to last-minute scramble to start putting stuff together, you know, the, you hearing about it, waiting for it week to week to week. And I don't think it's fair to the event coordinators for us to hold on that decision. So that's why I'm making that recommendation. But like I said, that's just my, my professional recommendation.
Anyone else before we go any further?
Well, for the special events, uh, I think what Hiram is saying, um, makes sense. I know, uh, that the planning aspect there is, uh, something that, uh, that takes a lot of time. It's unfortunate, but I think in these times that that's the right thing to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Harris?
I, I agree with, with, uh, what our town administrator is recommending.
Okay.
I think that's the, I think that's the most prudent thing to do at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Phillips, you'd like to speak in on anything on that?
He's muted.
You're muted, sir.
I got you.
My bad, sorry about that. So, my concern with, with canceling for the summer and end of the fall, um, if you look back at the course of this whole process, um, we've all been subject to the numbers and how they're changing over time. And a lot of my viewpoints this evening are due to the fact that the numbers have changed rather drastically, I think, for the good, um, from what we were expecting two weeks ago or three weeks ago or a month ago. So, taking that into consideration, I think it's a little premature to say for the rest of the calendar year that we're not gonna have anything. I understand it takes a long time to, um, plan events, get the bands together, get the vendors together, things of that nature. I also know that most contracts are written with a timeframe from cancellation without penalty. So, that being said, I think if you can, it's not like if somebody's booked now that they, and they cancel now, they'll automatically pay depending on what's written in their contract. Um, so I think ultimately, the, the more prudent thing to do, to try to save that is be, because especially if things do get back to normal faster, and say we get to, uh, you know, end of July and things are more normal, then those are events that bring people into the town, and if things are more normal and the number of, the concern about the COVID virus is less, um, thinking of our economy, there's all, things all bring people and money to our economy. So I think it's just a little early to think about canceling for the summer. I would think it's, it's reasonable to say that at the, uh, June meeting, that we reassess at that time and see where to go from there. And I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Phillips. Anyone else?
A question. Do, do, uh, can we contact, uh, Mrs. Joseph and find out just exactly how much time, uh, they would need? I, I sort of agree with Jamie. Um, I, I really don't think we're gonna be out of this in July, not fully, but, uh, this, this is not fun.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, I appreciate the, the need to bring this to our attention. Um, I think that we still have some, some more pressing issues to work through this evening to, to kind of sort out the timetable. Um, I understand the need to try to get this, bring this to our attention, but I think, uh, we should try to remain focused on the, the more pressing issues currently.
Yes, sir. And what else? You got something up quick, John?
I, I think we're pretty close to bringing it to, to a close, but the, uh, my comment is the, uh, on the governor's schedule, if you go optimistically, we're basically running up until about the 1st of August before it clears out of phase three. It would start at the end of June and go up into about August. With that, um, as much as I don't like it, I'm very comfortable with closing out special events in the park. I would ask our concert organizer, what kind of lead time would be needed? And we don't need a decision now in terms of going into, uh, August, late August, to do a couple of the concerts, if that was possible. Uh, and I think, sort of in line with where Councilman Nern was going on Sunset at Sunset, I think we have time to ask, uh, the director, uh, Ms. Karen Joseph, to, to chime in on, uh, at what point she thinks it's appropriate to, to, uh, to cancel altogether for the October event, Sunset at Sunset. That's all I got there.
Real quick to, just to speak to the, the reason why this is an immediate, uh, I just need to know about May then. Uh, we have a race that is scheduled for next weekend with 900-plus people. So do we have special events? We have them canceled through the 15th of this month. That is part of our state of emergency orders and everything else, so it is relevant to this conversation. Um, do you want to just go ahead and extend that through the end of this month now?
I know I don't have a vote, but with that being said, I would suggest that we wait to the January 2nd meeting, go ahead and close up everything the rest of the month.
June 1st.
The June 1st, I'm sorry. I got off like I did a while ago. The June 2nd meeting, address this and that way from everything going up, since we already did cover the last meeting up to the 15th. Go ahead and go from the 15th through that time.
All right.
That would probably be the wise, if, if, I mean, it's up to the council.
In other words, cancel May.
Cancel the rest of May right now.
And discuss it at the June meeting.
Just, uh, just a simple yay or nay from, from our council, just to make sure everybody gets their say. Councilman Corbett, would you be fine with that?
I agree with canceling up through the end of May.
Councilman Nern?
I agree.
Councilman Har- Councilwoman Harris?
I agree.
Councilman Borman?
Fine with me.
And Councilman Phillips?
I agree.
Okay.
Just so unclear, Mr. Mayor and Council, your June 2nd meeting?
Yes, sir. We would be canceled then, then address the upcoming time at that time, at the next meeting, as far as June goes.
Okay. I still think you should, I still think it should be documented by way of a motion with a second and then a vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion with that being said, that we cancel the events through, up to our, which would be for the rest of May, up to our June 2nd meeting?
June 1st.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Borman? Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Okay.
Point of clarification?
Go ahead, Jay. Yes, sir.
The meeting's June 1st.
That's June 1st, that's right.
So let the minutes reflect that you meant till the next meeting, June 1st, right?
Correct, correct. Yes, sir. All right, moving on from that, to, uh, be able to get this order back to going and figure out what we do, I think it's quite obvious, which we can yay or nay again on this before we get to a final conclusion, but I see that virtually everyone is in, in pretty much collusion, at least a majority, for opening the beach. Um, it has been, it has been suggested by our, by our Public Works and by a couple of members of council to look at maybe Wednesday, the 6th, at 12 o'clock. That would be opening the beach and opening the park. Do, could I have a yay or nay on that, Grady?
The beach is for exercise only.
Beach is for exercising only. Wednesday, the 6th, and the park, and asking at the park that they walk in, whether it's count or whatever, just to keep people as much social distance as, as we can do. Counter, I think is the way majority walk, going toward the bathroom to start out. Do, uh, we have, is it, Grady, would it be welcome to ask yays or nays on this, or how we need to go with that?
Someone can just put a motion out there with a second. You guys can open it up for discussion and then just take care of it all at one time on a motion.
Okay, I moved that we, uh, open the beach, including all access ways with some marked one-way and others identified for handicap only. To be effective, open at noon on Wednesday, 6th, May, for exercise only, consisting of walking, running, biking, and surfing, uh, no fishing, uh, no chairs, no equipment. And that's the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Go ahead, discussion.
I have a question. Can, can we add the parking is closed in with that motion?
Why don't we handle the parking separate?
Separate motion.
We'll do that separate motion.
Okay.
Council. All right, so this pertains to the beach and to the park for exercise only, starting Wednesday, the 6th, at 12 o'clock. That'll be exercise only, walking, biking, running, surfing, no equipment on the beach such as chairs, towels, umbrellas, anything like that. We have a motion, we have a second. Would you like to have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Borman?
Aye.
And Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. Takes care of that. All right. Next up should be our parking issue. We have the parking on the island as well as the parking at the park.
Um, if I may, real quick.
Go ahead.
The, the current state of emergency lists all-town parking to be limited to one hour, um, nothing in the right of ways, and all-town-owned parking lots are off, off limits.
Okay.
Uh, just so that y'all are aware of what's in, in effect currently.
Yeah. With that being said, if I'm not mistaken, the, I think we have four that wanted to keep the parking closed, one that, Mr. Phillips, I think you said maybe go ahead and open it. With that being said, do we want to have a motion about the parking? Do we want to include the island and the park separate, or what do we need to do? I need to have that discussion before we get to the...
I think we should separate the park.
Uh, I don't know. It's sort of hard to, sort of discriminate against one and not the other. We're, we're dealing with the whole town here, we have in the past. Um, I'm, I'm okay with either way.
Do you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I mean, if, if you want to separate them, uh, I was just gonna say that we have marked spaces, um, uh, for the parking lot and in the street right of way, um, in the streetway right there, right in front of the park. So if you're gonna include the park parking, you need to include what's on Sunset Boulevard as well. Where there used to be a median, we put in the diagonal spaces.
Yeah.
Uh, I see that.
What's the rationale, uh, Mr. Mayor, can I just?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
What's the rationale for, for separating the, uh, two different parking areas?
My judgment on this is that, uh, if we open up the parking on the island, right-of-ways and public parking, uh, that encourages people from further away to come in and move in onto the beach.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And as I said, at one point, you don't have restrooms for those, for the, those facilities. The other, uh, the difference that is, the, the, the park itself is heavily used by residents, although people from outside can come, uh, would the bathrooms be open?
My recommendation on that is still no.
No.
Uh, we run into the same cleaning problems. Plus, and, and not to hammer on some points here, but our cleaning supplies won't last forever either. So having to clean these things multiple times every day, when, you know, I can't even go to the store and buy cleaning products right now.
Right.
Kind of difficult.
Okay. Okay. I, I mean, I can go with, uh, no parking at the park also.
With that being said, does someone want, want to make a motion on the parking, that we have no parking, and then we'll vote on that? Do I have a motion that there'll be no parking in the park nor the beach, is what y'all saying? I think that's what y'all come to conclusion.
I, I have one thing to add.
Go ahead.
Are we gonna set a date? Uh, the date I suggested was May 11th.
For the parking? For the parking?
For the parking. To allow parking?
I think that's way too quick. Particularly if we don't have, particularly if we don't have bathrooms out there.
Would it? Excuse me. Um, sorry, I'm ready to finish.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I was just gonna say, I thought that, that we said that we would, uh, we would consider that on the 19th, um, what we would do with the parking.
That's what I said earlier, yes.
So, what I would like to, to look at potentially is kind of meet in the middle and maybe look at the 15th for the parking. That would give us one weekend where we have the parking open on a weekend before Memorial Day, and that might get us a better sense of how many people we're gonna have come in on a, on a weekend versus if we don't do anything until the 19th, uh, then we have no, no gauge before Memorial Day.
Makes good sense, Councilman Phillips.
I don't, I, I don't mind meeting in the middle. I, that would sound reasonable to me.
So that, if I'm understanding you correctly, that means at our second meeting this month, we would evaluate how the parking worked, uh...
Correct.
And, and decide whether we pull the plug or not.
Correct. And, and, and depending on how things go, that may have an effect upon, uh, what we do regarding short-term rentals. So I think that would be a good, good information to have as we go into that meeting on the 19th.
If I'm not mistaken, that 15 falls on a Friday, correct, sir?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
So, so the suggestion then, Jamie, is that we would open the parking on the 15th? we would open the parking on the fifteenth and then make a judgment on the nineteenth as to whether that was a good idea?
No, I guess the, the thought at that point is we would open the parking on the fifteenth, it would give us the weekend to see how it goes. And if it goes well or poorly, um, based on the influx of people that we actually have, it would give us insight for that meeting on the nineteenth to determine about the rentals on the twenty-first and, or twenty-second for Memorial Day. So I'm afraid if we don't have a weekend where the beach is a little bit more open than, than, than just people who live on the island or who can either bike or walk over, uh, we're not gonna have enough information to make an informed decision about the rentals going into, in Memorial Day.
My, my point was sort of that the day we set for the rentals is, is not dependent on whether we allow public parking on the roads.
Correct.
Because the rentals have places where they can. Uh, the other side of that is, is that if we're going to set a time to open up the short-term rentals, uh, we need to really give them time to manage their business and, and uh, on the assumption that on Friday, the eighth, the governor goes into phase one, then, then the twenty-second, in my mind, the twenty-second is a reasonable date giving the, 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 the properties time to, to do their rentals. But I don't think, uh, waiting till the nineteenth. One, I think that's too short a window for people to make their plans for Memorial Day. And, and the second part of it is, I don't think whether we allow right-of-way and public parking, uh, impacts the decision to open up short-term rentals. I think those are just apples and oranges.
So from my perspective, if I could just, again, I was looking to do the short-term rentals on the fifteenth. So my concern again is we need to start phasing some of these in so that we don't get slammed without enough information. Um, so, but I'm, I'm comfortable with a target date of the, of the twenty-first or twenty-second, uh, Thursday or Friday before Memorial Day. Um, I would just like to see that, that weekend in between where we have the beach opened up to a little bit more of the population to see how things go.
Well, well, if we let parking and start on the fifteenth, that would give us the influx of people coming to the beach on the weekend. And again, we would be able to make an evaluation on our meeting at the nineteenth of, of, is the parking manageable or not?
Correct, I see your point. Thank you.
Let's, uh, let's not mix parking with short-term rentals.
Yeah, I, I don't see, see the link there at all.
Well, that's what I was trying to separate.
But the, uh, uh, as far as short-term, well, let's, let's make up our mind on the parking. One thing we can't do is evaluate over the weekend and then at the meeting on Tuesday say, sorry, no more parking. No, no way we can do that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I, 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 I think it's reasonable to open up right-of-way parking and, and, uh, public parking on the fifteenth and then understanding that we will do a evaluation of it on the night, at our meeting on the nineteenth.
Why would we evaluate it if we're not going to, uh,
if we're gonna, if we're gonna pull the plug. If we open up on the fifteenth and the parking becomes unmanageable and we're not comfortable with the situation by having the right-of-way and public parking on Friday, the fifteenth for that weekend, then at our meeting on the nineteenth after that, we can evaluate whether we're gonna close down public parking again or not.
I just can't see opening parking for a weekend and then closing it down again. I, I just see problems with that.
Yeah, I.
I, I agree with Councilman Nern on that.
So the, the idea then is to open parking and just do away with any evaluation of whether that was a good, good decision or not?
That, that's my suggestion.
Councilman Borman, you have anything to add to this?
I, I was in favor of us, uh, determining on the nineteenth if we're going to, to open up parking. Um, I don't see the link between parking and, and, uh, short-term rentals. So I do agree that it wouldn't make sense for us to say, open up on the fifteenth and then say, but it may close on the nineteenth. I think we should, should just open it on the nineteenth, uh, provided that all of the, the, uh, the social distancing and all the other, uh, things that we want to see happening on the beach, that it is happening because once we open up the parking, then the beach is gonna become more crowded. So my thought on it was that, that we wanted to see how things were working out on the beach. There would be the, uh, private parking, which is available to people and there's the people that, that then live on the island as well. So my thought was that, that we would wait till the nineteenth to, uh, decide on parking.
With that being said, I think we have two for the fifteenth and two for the nineteenth. And Councilman Phillips, I guess that would put you in the deciding vote more or less, or deciding yes or nay for this thing before we bring all the parking and all and get it together for a next motion. So I would address you.
I'm in favor of the fifteenth for releasing the restrictions on the parking. Um, you know, I understand, you know, we're scheduled for two weeks, but if we get in a situation where we feel like we need to have a meeting, we can always have a meeting and readjust, but I'm, I'm in favor of the fifteenth.
Any more discussion before we make a thing up to the motion?
I just want to add, at the same time, we'll open up parking at the park.
Okay. So the motion that we'll be looking for would be for keeping all public parking closed and opening it up on the fifteenth would be the target date for opening it up unless a special meeting or something came up between then. But as of right now, that would be to keep the parking closed and on the fifteenth, we're looking to open up the parking. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion for this?
I, I move that we keep parking closed until May fifteenth. Al- allow parking on, on May fifteenth, on, uh, all, all public parking on May fifteenth at the beach and at the park.
Beginning of what time?
Six AM.
Seven AM, six AM.
Six AM.
Six AM, we'd be in line with our latest ordinance adoption.
Okay, I think that takes care. We got the park, the beach and the parking.
You need a second. Yeah, who's the second? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Councilman Corbett?
Aye.
Councilman Nern?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Borman?
Nay.
Council, excuse me, Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. The.
Real quick, can I get a clarification on the first motion? I had someone, uh, already email asking if we, uh, are allowing people to swim.
Yes.
Okay, because I know you mentioned surf and you mentioned walking, running, biking.
Surfing, well.
Yeah, so.
Swim, yes.
So it'll be swim, surf, run, walk, how the, how the order would be wrote up. We need to make sure when we write this order this time, they just write off the, I don't want to have to keep signing stuff over. Alright, next up, uh, as far as the bathrooms go, we need to address this. Do we look to keep the bathrooms closed? I think from what I've seen, that each one of you spoke, that there is a definite majority to keep the bathrooms spoke, uh, closed until basically further noticed. I don't think we'll open it before the nineteenth to do.
We can revisit it on the nineteenth.
Revisit that on the nineteenth. Do I have a motion that the bathrooms will remain closed and that we will look to, look at the nineteenth meeting to discuss the reopening of them?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Councilman Corbett?
Aye.
Councilman Nern?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Borman?
Aye.
And Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. And then last, well, not literally last, as far as, let's go ahead and go to the events. Do we have, um, I think what we've discussed so far, we're going to at least go ahead and, and knock out the rest of May. Is that correct? Or do we want to go ahead and look as extending as events as far as the concerts, the, um.
Can, uh, can we do?
We got that, so it is covered just through this month.
We did that the first, that was the first motion.
Didn't we decide short-term rentals yet?
That's, that's the next thing. I just wanted to get our list that we needed to get covered here. May event, council. Alright, next up will be the short, short-term rentals.
I, uh, I, I still think we should open up on the fifteenth. Just to see how it's working, because you know we're gonna be packed for Memorial Day. Yeah, I, I'm not tied solid to that. I, I can go with the twenty-second, either one, just as long as the rental companies know at the end of this meeting, uh, so they can prepare.
I'm in favor of that as well, twenty-second.
Okay. So whatever, I think from what I reviewed on the other, do you have anybody else have discussion? Jim, we, we fixing to bring it up, but do you have any discussion before we go to this?
No.
Okay, so with that being said, from what everyone has said, y'all all have said, it's basically saying that the short-term will stay closed up until the twenty-second is the target date we, that we will be giving the rental companies and the individuals that own houses, that they should be able to go ahead and start looking toward renting unless something majorly changes somewhere else. That would be the date that we would go ahead and sort of give them so they can start preparing.
Um, I just want to remind y'all that your, uh, state of emergency mentions long-term and short-term rentals.
It will cover long-term and short-time term at the same time then, if that's fine with y'all. But as far as that being said, do we need, or what, do y'all, are y'all in favor of a motion? Or can I get a motion that the short-term rentals will be tentatively scheduled to open back up on the twenty-second, which I think is the Friday before Memorial Day? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
May, Mr. Mayor, may I interject?
Go ahead, sir.
That is Memorial Day weekend and you're talking about a tentative settle, a tentative opening of short-term rentals. You've got a meeting on the.
Not tentative.
Well, you've got a, you've got another meeting on the nineteenth.
We would know by the nineteenth, but just, we're just trying to give a little bit of heads up to the people so they can go ahead and start preparing, knowing that it probably would not happen before the twenty-second.
Right, I guess what I'm, what I'm, I guess what I'm wondering, and I'm not obviously in the short-term rental business, but you're talking about tentatively allowing it and then you could yank it out from the owners on the nineteenth meeting for whatever reason might come up. And I can just imagine the outcry you're gonna have there and I'm wondering if council shouldn't ponder an earlier start date to try and gauge, or I don't know, maybe you just say that's going to be a hard opening. Actually make plans. I mean, you've got folks, you've got folks that gotta make travel plans coming from out of state, airports and I don't know that anybody's gonna really be able to do anything with any degree of confidence if it's a possibility of it being yanked on the, you know, two or three days before Memorial Day weekend.
May I, may I make a comment?
Go ahead, yes, sir.
You know, one, I think definitely remove the word tentative. But I think, uh, if we set it up on the twenty-second conditional on the governor declaring phase one on Friday, the eighth. Yeah, if the governor doesn't do, if the governor does not go into phase one, then, then we've got a, a very complicated situation.
Well, then, then you, then, then council could always adjust and, and do a special meeting based upon, you know, a circumstance that no one's ever seen. You could certainly call a special emergency meeting to address whatever Governor Cooper's, uh, phase one does or does not touch upon on May eighth.
So are you saying just be definitive? We, we will, the motion should be that we will approve reopening for short-term rentals on the twenty-second of May, period?
You, well, you can make it subject to Governor Cooper's, uh, announcement on May eighth, if, if, if there's going to be something that he might announce on that date, which is just right around the corner, that could somehow, I guess, torpedo what you're talking about. But yeah, I think it should be absent Governor Cooper May eighth, changing things or changing the equation. I think you should give folks some, some fairly hard, uh, reliability on a May twenty-second opening, uh, for short-term rentals and long-term, if that's what you're gonna do.
Yes, sir, thank you, attorney. That being said, then we will be looking for a motion to allow short-term, short-term and long-term rentals to start back on the, May the twenty-second. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Councilman Corbett?
Aye.
Councilman Nern?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
And Councilman Borman?
Aye.
Okay. Do you see anything else, Ben, that needs to be addressed, Grady, other than the, I know we talked about the events, we've got all that lined up. The only other thing that I know, which I think was included, if I'm not mistaken, about the staff, do we need to continue to keep the staff working out of office or do we need to go ahead and look to open in the office back up?
No, uh, even Governor Cooper's phase one calls for telecommuting as much as possible.
Okay.
Um, and honestly, uh, with the influx of people, I don't trust the public coming in here and I can't, I, I want to guarantee the safety of my staff.
Okay.
Um, that's something we can revisit on the, on June first.
Okay.
Um, and even then, my recommendation is if we do open town hall or if we stop telecommuting, we still don't open town hall, or if we do, it's limited hours.
Okay.
Um, I've, I've got several at-risk employees, regardless of what people may think about, there's no cases here. It doesn't mean there won't be.
Yes, sir.
Should we discuss that in June?
We should discuss it in June.
So we'll just leave that as going as it is now. We don't need to have any kind of discussion.
It's, it's under, it's under your superseding last.
Okay.
There, there's one other item.
Go ahead.
I had, uh, slipped in a bit for us to discuss on the nineteenth of May, whether or not we, uh, you know, we've got non-essential, non-exercise activities. At what time do we permit the non-exercise activities? You know, we've got, the, the beach is opening for exercise.
That goes along with the parking, is that looking at, at, at the fifteenth? Is that the date that we're looking to maybe let them start sitting and bringing things out? What is the, the, just council needs to discuss a date for that, but we do need, I guess, go ahead and sort of set something for that? Especially if it's gonna be before the nineteenth. It would be better to go ahead and have it in the order to start instead of having to go back and rewrite. So with that being said.
My, my view on that one is, is basically we should do that the weekend before the fifteenth so we have a chance to see what happens when everybody brings all their kit.
The weekend before the fifteenth or after?
The fifteenth, of the fifteenth, of the fifteenth, of the fifteenth, sorry.
Councilman Nern, do you have anything to add?
No.
Councilwoman Harris?
No.
Councilman Borman?
Uh, so, so just to be clear, we're saying that on the fifteenth, we would also allow chairs and, and umbrellas and coolers and all that.
And cabanas and, yeah. Cabanas, social distancing, all that come in?
Swings back in the park.
Swings back in the park.
Swings back in the park also. Councilman Phillips?
I agree with Mr. Corbett on that.
Okay, with that being said, can we have a motion? That, uh, that we will go ahead and put down that the sitting or bringing things to the beach as far as basically full activity on the beach would be looked at on the fifteenth along with the park, bringing the benches and opening everything pretty much back up on that? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Councilman?
Aye.
Councilman Nern?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Borman?
Aye.
And Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. Takes care of that. Any, anything else that anyone sees that we need to cover as far as getting the order changed?
Hmm, you may want to put in there just for clarity that you'll be following the governor's guidelines on social distancing, just to cover a roundabout base.
Okay.
That way when he changes, we don't have to change the proclamation.
Okay. And with that being said, I would, I would say, Lisa, you will write up an order tomorrow sometime. And uh, you would get it, of course, to Grady, so we can get the correct ver, words and everything in there the first time, so when we sign it, we won't have to keep addressing it again, please? Alright, thank you. Anything else before we come out of this one?
Move on.
Move on then. Thank you. Alright, next up is the remote participation policy amendment. Hareem, I think that you're the one that's listed on this one.
Yeah, yes, sir. Um, Attorney Richardson, Lisa and I discussed this the other day. The uh, remote uh, participation policy before had prohibited closed-session activities. But due to not knowing when we'll be able to meet, um, we recommend amending it to, let me pull my agenda up, sorry. Striking out closed-session um, under the not allowed. And, and placing a statement up there. My draft statement here is closed-session where uh, would be uh, the remote participation shall be allowed only for the following limited and exceptional reasons. See, closed-session where a delay in a meeting would not be practical. Participation shall only be allowed through the method approved by council when established in the meeting. So we wouldn't just call it, y'all would have to establish it. But this is for those instances where we have to meet, say, for a personnel matter that has to be discussed or, or something that must be taken care of, and we're still in this kind of boat. Um, so it's just a matter of cleaning up the language and the ordinance to allow for a closed-session.
Okay, do we have any, any discussion amongst council?
I'm fine.
In regards to this? If so, go ahead. You have some discussion, sir?
No, not for me, sorry.
Alright, with that, with that being sa, said, do I have a motion to approve the above amended amendments related to the closed-session meetings? Do I have a motion?
Jamie.
Jamie, alright. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Councilman Corbett?
Aye.
Councilman Nern?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Borman?
Aye.
And Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. I think Grady is welcome to go enjoy his family. Grady, I think that covers you, sir. We appreciate you joining us and getting us some clarifications.
It's my pleasure.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I'll work with Lisa on, and hire him on the uh, the language for the minutes and the motions, okay?
Please, please, so it'll be right the first time. Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Yes, sir, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Grady.
Be safe.
Alright, ready?
Alright, moving on next, it'll be the general council discussion. Do we have anything in this area? Councilman Nern, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Councilman Corbett?
Uh, just like to bring up one thing. I think we added to our uh, website, the reminder to the community uh, private homes at least, about discouraging folks from putting pine straw around their houses.
Yeah, we got it on Facebook, I believe, and Twitter. And I, I don't know, did we get it posted on the website? I mean, it's already on there somewhere, but.
Yeah, yeah. It's particularly on the island, but residents are discouraged from using pine straw because it is much more combustible than, than mulch or other items. And fires on the island are extremely dangerous. Leave it at that.
Any other discussion? Councilman Borman, Councilman Phillips, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Councilman Phillips, you good? Councilwoman Harris?
Nothing.
Okay, moving on. Next up will be our minutes for approval. Be the March second, twenty-twenty-first regular meeting, March the ninth, twenty-twenty special meeting. Mark, March the tenth. March the tenth, twenty-twenty special meeting minutes. March the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-second regular meeting minutes. March the seventeenth, special meeting minutes, and April the twenty-first, twenty-twenty special meeting minutes.
I uh, I have no corrections or additions.
Alright, Councilwoman Harris, you have any corrections?
I have nothing.
Councilman? Corbett?
Yeah, I do. Uh, I have a question on page eighteen of the minutes, uh, where we uh.
Which meeting?
I'm sorry, March seventeenth?
It's marked down at the bottom, page eighteen.
It's packet page eighteen. Uh, in the second paragraph, we talked about public comments. Did we include in that discussion at that time that we want the name and address of the uh, the sender? We did not, okay, so we don't need to add that. Then I have two typos. I can give them to you after the meeting, okay?
Councilman Borman, Councilman Phillips, either one of you have anything to add?
No changes from me.
Okay, that being said, do I have a motion that we accept the minutes for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Councilman Corbett?
Aye.
Councilman Nern?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Borman?
Aye.
And Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we've done, done the public comments, so we'll be leaving that. Next up will be our town administrator report. Hareem, you have the floor?
Alright, thank you. Um, I've been giving y'all a weekly report, um, but works moving forward. Uh, things are getting done, of course. Uh, everybody's coping. Um, we've already gone over Bird Island. The other thing I've got on here is Saturday pickup for our weekend collection. Uh, with y'all's amendments tonight to the proclamation, I'll be contacting Waste Industries or Green for Life tomorrow. And letting them know they probably start on the fifteenth, so they'll have a week of, of, to get their, their stuff together before short-term rentals open. So trash collection, recycling will shift to Saturdays for the island. Um, but still be Wednesdays for the mainland.
Yes, sir.
And uh, two, twice a week pickup, Wednesdays and Saturdays for the island pickup and whatever limited portion of it on the mainland.
And what day was that starting?
Uh, since y'all started on the fifteenth, it should be starting the sixteenth. I don't know, with the twenty-second being short-term rentals, the weekend before would be the sixteenth. And I'll talk to Alan about that tomorrow, and he said that he should be good to go as soon as I gave him the message. Um, but that also gives him a week, just in case he's got a. He gets started on the twenty-second, or the twenty-third instead, but.
Okay.
And, and Lisa, can you put out an info at Sunset Beach on all that when it, when it happens? Thank you.
That's all I've got.
That's all you got, sir. Thank you, sir. Alright, moving on, the department reports. Um. Council had a chance to look at everything. Do we need to bring somebody in to let them go ahead and start? The first one up will be the planning, which is Todd Rodamacher. Todd available? Yeah, I see him now.
Good.
Go ahead, sir.
Alright, uh, well, I uh, just had to mention a few things that I put in my uh, weekly reports, just for everybody, uh, just keep everybody abreast of what's going on construction-wise in, in the community and planning-wise, some of the projects that we approved uh, over the past year. Uh, with Artesa Village, the apartment complex, uh, uh, they anticipate building one and the clubhouse to be completed by November first of uh, this year. And ready for residency. Um, the project fully occupied by February first of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, Sunset Ridge, which is the Bill Clark Project. Uh, that is currently being cleared. Uh, all approvals are complete at, at the state level. Uh, they are currently installing their water and sewer and expect to be ready to plat and record lots uh, in two and a half to three months. Uh, their other project, the Sanctuary, uh, they have their permits into the Army Corps of Engineers. To, well, excuse me, they're getting ready to submit for their permits to the Army Corps of Engineers, I believe, on the twenty-first of this month. Uh, and anticipate land clearing activities commence uh, at the beginning of June. Uh, the Towns at Sunset, uh, which is the H and H Homes Project. Uh, this one is within the town limits. Uh, all permits are in hand, uh, with the exception of the Department of Transportation driveway permit. Uh, that they are currently in the process of reviewing. Uh, they're out for bids on the infrastructure work, uh, land clearing and things of those natures to begin. Uh, at the end of the month, uh, the clearing activities on that site as well. We have uh, really done really well, I would say, for our department in, in regard to how our day-to-day activities have functioned. Communication in the field with the inspectors, with uh, myself and the, the rest of staff and our admin, Cindy pulling it all together for us uh, has been tremendous. You know, we've uh, been able to facilitate our citizens and clients, uh, I think at a really high level, considering everything that's going on. Um, so I'm really proud of everybody on our team in, in that regard. But the purity continues to be strong. Uh, we, we are permitting a lot of new homes still. We're getting a lot of inquiries on new homes. Uh, a lot of people were doing a lot of do-it-yourself projects, uh, you know, things of that nature. So, so everything's in a real positive uh, direction at, as the time, at, at the time being. Um, I would clarify one thing that I mentioned in one of my reports on the Summerwood Apartments. And that is something that a developer is seeking, not something the town or the town staff is going after. There is a developer who's seeking uh, financial credits, if you will, uh, through the state for uh, a family subsidized housing uh, project, if you will. But that is something that they're in competition with. That's outside of our control at this point in time and uh, you know, just keeping you guys advised of the uh, uh, of the situation with that developer, uh, since they've been working with us on the Artesa Village project. Uh, and that is anticipated to be more of a family-based project as opposed to a senior living project. Other than that, everything's going well, and if you have any questions, I'm always uh, there to help out in any way I can.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Rodamacher?
No.
No.
Yeah.
I think, thank you, Todd. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Have a great night.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to the Public Works Department. Mr. Dustin Graham, our Public Works Director, you're up, sir.
I'd just like to add that uh, we have moved all the trashcan poles out on the beach. Um, some up to twelve, some to ten foot out, so allow more for us to drive behind the young trashpoles more easier and some to say we can stay off the dunes, that they were saying, but uh, we done that. Plus Barn Hill Construction will be paving, uh, just coming Wednesday morning, starting about seven-thirty. They'll be starting on Rice Mill. Uh, next to the townhouses, working towards Cotton Mill and Forest Creek, uh, Wednesday morning and Thursday. Then they will move from there over to the Colony, that's in Oyster Bay on next Tuesday, to pave that section over there.
You have anything else?
That's it.
Have any discussion or any questions, suggestions, ideas?
When is Thirty-Ninth Street Walkway anticipated to be finished?
I was hoping to get started back on this coming Monday.
But you're not now.
Well, this, this, uh, the, yeah, next, next Monday, I was looking at getting started.
Okay, thank, thank you.
They still have to try to work with social distancing measures to, and wear as much PPE as they can to, to manage that, so.
Yes.
Any other councilmen or councilwoman have any discussions or anything for him?
Thank you, Dustin.
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, Dustin. We appreciate you. Next up will be our Police Chief Staff, Chief Ken Claymore, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you and good evening. Um, I really don't have a whole lot to add. If you have any questions on the report that's included in your packet, I'll be more than happy to answer those for you. Um, we're just continuing to limit interactions as best we can with folks, but sometimes it's just not entirely possible. So we do what we can to make sure that we're clean and sanitized and stay healthy.
We appreciate you, what you've been doing. I know it's been hard and we appreciate it. Anybody have any kind of questions, discussion or anything for Chief?
Well, I think as, as, as long as we have the no parking rules in place, enforcement there is fairly straightforward.
Parking, yeah, that's pretty clear.
Yeah, I um, one area where I have concerns is uh, it's still pretty easy to discern when a house is not being occupied. And, and so, do you have any suggestions in terms of how we can improve uh, identifying and, and ticketing people who are parking under houses to go to the beach? When uh, they don't live there and they don't have permission? My idea was to make everybody put a, who doesn't reside at that location, to put a piece of paper clearly visible that I'm parking here with the permission of so-and-so, the owner, and the owner's phone number, so we could verify it. But that's a little bit extreme, but uh.
Without having a lot of time to think through it, just off the cuff, I think that, again, we'd have to take those complaint-based. The majority of my staff isn't gonna know if a car is underneath the house and doesn't belong there. And I think we'd handle it similar to what we would do with the short-term rentals in that we would find out through um, the tax record who the property owner is. Run the license plate on the vehicle, um, and then try to make contact with the property owner to find out if, in fact, that vehicle is allowed to be there.
But it sounds to me like you're saying the main thing is if, if, if a resident observes or sees it, they should notify you and that would, that would file a complaint.
Correct, notify us when the vehicle's there, not the following Monday.
When the vehicle is there, okay.
Correct.
And, and then the resident who makes that notification has to give their name and their contact information.
That is correct.
Before you will act on it.
That is correct.
Okay, and is there a good number that they should call, particularly after duty hours?
Nine-one-one.
Okay, for, for that type of violation?
For that type of violation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councilmen or councilwoman have any questions?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Councilman Borman.
Uh, so, when we opened the beaches, um, one of my concerns was the enforcement of, of social distancing and uh, uh, the other rules that we put in place. How will that happen? Once the beaches are open? Who, who will be responsible for that and how will we manage it?
I, I think, and I don't want to speak for the fire chief, but I think when the beach is open in a limited capacity, I don't know that Beach Patrol would be president, present. Excuse me. When the beach is open for all activities and people can bring chairs and lounge, I believe that would then fall into the hands of um, the Beach Patrol. And they would have to use their best judgment, as our police officers would, to make sure that folks are following what's specified in the governor's order for social distancing and the grouping.
Can the, the Beach Patrol issue summonses?
They can.
They can?
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Everybody good?
Thank you, Chief, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Chief. And, and make sure the police department knows that their work over this period of time is well appreciated. Thank you.
Next up is our Fire Chief, Paul Hossenmeyer.
Alright, good evening. I'm gonna keep this short, because I'm on the agenda in a little bit too, but uh, the monthly report. EMS numbers are down a little bit compared to normal. Uh, that's because we've been reducing some of the responses at the Brunswick County EMS has been calling us to assist, uh, trying to reduce those number of contacts, but overall, uh, guys are training, everybody's staying healthy, so that's most important. I'll take any questions if you have it.
No. Anyone have any questions or discussion for Fire Chief?
No.
I do. Uh, Beach Patrol. Uh, if we're going to open up the beaches Wednesday. And as Councilman Borman pointed out, social distancing is the issue. When can we start having Beach Patrol people out there? Or somebody, you know, we're telling we're gonna enforce social distancing, we have to have a way and somebody who's gonna enforce social distancing.
Um, I'm gonna defer to when, when exactly the boss wants us out there, but we can make it happen relatively quickly. I gotta talk to the Police Chief as well on uh, the social distancing, how we're gonna enforce that, citations, we don't, it's we gotta have some conversations tomorrow about how all that. Certainly, we can recommend everybody stay apart, how we're gonna if we're gonna be aggressive on citations and whatnot, we gotta kinda get a game plan together, but um, I would think we, by, by the fifteenth of May, when you have uh, the parking back open, beaches back open.
Sitting.
And, and sitting rentals back open, uh, we'll be full-tilt that weekend and, and going into Memorial Day. Um, and I think some conversations about having Deputy Chief Adams out here, out there uh, after this Wednesday, uh, to help with some things and watch people, but I think when, when we initially had the beach closed down except for exercise, the crowds weren't huge, so uh, as long as everybody keeps moving, um, I think we'll be okay. But by the fifteenth- But by the fifteenth, we're gonna have to be full-tilt.
Have it in force, okay.
I, I think there should also be a stepped-up plan that starts off if we're going to open the beaches this week. So that by the weekend, we have a plan to have some coverage, to have some folks out there, if, if at all possible.
Do you have anybody hired yet?
This weekend?
Yeah.
We have some returning guys. We've got to do some training yet that we've been putting off. If I can, let, let the police chief and I talk about that and, and Mr. Marziano tomorrow to kind of formulate a plan and see what we can do, if that's okay.
Yeah, there, there needs to be a few things done because I, I know the police chief just said, but I'm not sure that civilians that aren't badged can issue misdemeanor twos, class-two misdemeanors. I mean, that seems like a law enforcement function. So, yeah, so Beach Patrol will not be issuing that to them, but they will be reporting it to the police if they have to.
We'd have to report it for you guys to come.
They'll, they'll, they'll take the, the traditional approach of education first and then police second.
But my, my point is that that should start this week, that we have somebody out there to educate and to be able to identify if we have a problem area.
And if we can get the staff there, get them educated, I will authorize limited hours for this weekend. We don't have enough people, I don't think, the staff at seven to seven, do we? Friday through Sunday?
Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, because you're still, you haven't done all your training, you haven't done, yeah, because.
I mean, realistically, we're not gonna need seven AM either.
Right.
True, but.
We can have a presence of some sort, but.
But let us work that out.
By, by the fifteenth, we'll be full, ready to go, you know, because it sounds like everything's gonna be pretty much opened up. So by, by that weekend, we'll be ready to go.
And the police can still maintain their patrols as they have been to an extent. So there will be people out there. But I don't think solely relying on Beach Patrol this short notice is feasible.
Chief, before you close, have you got enough, I'll, I'll be right with you, Councilman. Have you got enough volunteers that's already started? Are you still looking for more people to be on Beach Patrol? Or how are you standing in that?
We have, actually, I brought it because I thought you might ask. The list right now, not including Deputy Chief Adams, myself, Deputy Chief Childers, that'll, that'll be helping too at, at some points. But it's, it's looking like we're gonna have twelve returning people. And we have nine, nine potential new hires, but we're waiting on background checks. That they're running through the PD right now. So hopefully this week we'll have a, a pretty good number.
Do you feel like that'll be adequate, or do you still need some, some order to put in for that?
People can still apply.
I guess that's the main thing. I want to know if you still, we're taking some applications because I've had some different.
We'll still take applications and, and we'll, the, the group we have now will, will run with. But there's always a possibility somebody might not like being out there.
Yeah, I knew you always said about twenty-five or so you like to start with, and then you'll work them out with some.
There's also potential, we've been holding off on any summer apprentices as well. I think there's a potential one or two, but I'm, I'm gonna push that back and maybe not even do it. Just see how that goes to down the stretch. I don't want to bring somebody in unless I have to.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Borman or Mr. Phillips, did one of y'all want to speak?
Yeah, this is, this is Tom Borman. So, so then the fire and police chiefs and Hiram are going to meet and discuss the details of a plan on how, how we get this covered. The opening of the beach obviously is something that was just decided on. But we, we do need a plan on, I, I'm, I'm concerned about the social distancing. And I've been reading reports about other beaches, some of them good, some of them not so good. So I would like to know that we're gonna have some kind of a plan for us to have, have the coverage that we need and that we will be enforcing those rules.
Again, there will be people out there enforcing. And like I said, the Beach Patrol doesn't have the authority to issue misdemeanors. So they will have to call the police should the people not comply. But yeah, there, there will be people out there starting as soon as the beach is open as best the police can manage it.
Okay.
Anything else? Ms. Harris, you fine?
I'm fine.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate y'all. Appreciate everything you do for us. Next up will be our Stormwater Department report. Mr. John Mashawn, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. One item, the first item I have on my report is the fact that we received bids on the Second and Third Street project. I'll be, I'll move on from that. That's again on the agenda. Our next item, old business on the agenda. We've been doing some video inspections, checking out the condition of many of the pipes on the island and done quite a bit of cleaning to the, to the pipes down there, continue to do so, and looking at the outfalls and the drainage easements and things, things of that nature. We also participated in a rain garden workshop via Zoom in preparation when we get back to normal operations to hopefully do a project here on, onsite. And we also, you might have noticed, I don't know, we've been working with our new vac, multi-hog vac system on the sidewalk on the beach. And that's operating very well now, so.
Good deal.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Anybody got any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Y'all good? Everybody good?
Fine, yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you. Next up will be Ms. Tara Drop, our Financial Department. You have the floor, ma'am.
Well, you have your report in front of you. We have slowed down spending tremendously just because the revenues are so unknown. Is there, are there any questions with this report?
Councilman Borman, Councilwoman Phillips, y'all good with the report?
Yeah, fine.
Councilwoman Harris, you good?
I am.
Mr. Harris?
I'm good.
Thank you very much, Tara. Appreciate it.
I'm still up here.
Okay. Next up, we'll go to the next, try to move along, starting old business, our draft budget ordinance and request for a public hearing. Ms. Tara, you have the floor.
Okay, so I, we had our last budget meeting and we didn't make any changes at that meeting. There was one thing that we did not discuss that I would like a little bit of direction on. It doesn't have to do with the general fund, so it won't affect our, any of our general fund expenditures, this, other than what we transfer from accommodation tax. And that is the nonprofit requests that we received. We have received six this year and the total amount is thirty-one thousand, one hundred. So I guess what I need to know from you all is if you want to discuss each of those individually or if as a whole you want to have a certain dollar amount on it. Right now, we use last year's amount, which was ten thousand, five hundred in the accommodation tax. And this is significantly more this year that has been requested.
Have we always had a limit?
There's not a limit. This is, I just used last year's amount and it just came in way above that.
Yeah, well, I, I thought in the past there was a, we worked with ten thousand dollars.
For individual.
In, in the past, the council with each budget discussed how much they wanted to give each organization and capped it themselves. There's no official cap in any policies.
The individual ones, there, there's two requests for ten thousand each. So there wasn't any individual ones above the ten thousand. So there's two for ten thousand, one for forty-six hundred, one for twenty-five hundred, and two for two thousand.
And this is something y'all can discuss at the public hearing or?
You can. And I can send all the individual information for each one to you all.
I would like to see everything so we'll know.
So what I, what my plan is, is to send the, the top couple pages because you don't need to know, you don't really need to review all of their financial statements. We just want to make sure that they're actually a nonprofit. I have all of those packets. So what I'll send to you, if you want, is what they're requesting, who they are, and why they're requesting it.
Please, I think.
Does that sound sufficient?
Do we have a, sort of a history of how much money we've been giving them in the past?
Yeah, I'd like to see that too, yes.
They list that on this, so somebody that we have had many times in the past is the Planterium. And they have listed the year and the amount that we've given them over, like.
And you'll send the stat?
It's on this, it's on one of those pages that I mentioned. So does that sound, so you want to do that?
Just to make sure we all have it, we can review it at least.
Okay.
But that, that thirty-one thousand, at this time, is it covered anywhere in the budget?
Only ten thousand, five hundred of it is, and that's in the accommodation tax fund budget. So what that would affect is our transfer to the general fund.
Okay, so it'd come out of the one hundred and twenty-two thousand?
Correct.
Fifty that's there?
Right.
All right, I'm good with that.
And then is, and so is there any other questions regarding the budget? That I didn't make any changes because we didn't have any consensus for any changes.
Just to be clear, we had no full-time manpower additions in this budget?
No new employees.
We dropped all of those things back out. Okay. And on the, the Fire Department, did we drop the original request for new radios and the new pickup truck for the fire truck, Fire Department? It wasn't, when I looked at the numbers, I, I got confused, so.
All of those were in capital. So let me look. There's no department equipment and there's no department vehicles. The reason that theirs doesn't look like it changed is because it has to match the revenue. Like the, the total amount at the end, it looks like it didn't change, but that's just because it has to match the revenue.
The, the one other area that I was, I couldn't explain to myself, on the Beach Erosion Fund, Packet Page Fifty-seven.
Yes.
You, you've got, at the bottom line on the totals, there's FY nineteen-twenty budget was a hundred thousand. Proposed budget this year is a hundred thousand.
The change is because the.
And the decrease is three hundred and eight thousand.
The reserve, that's, it's the reserve amount. So it, so the, because Beach Erosion is its own fund, it doesn't, there's nowhere that it affects the general fund. So when we project the occupancy tax, then I'll know what the change actually is. Because anything over that hundred thousand just automatically goes into the fund balance. So last year we projected that it would be around four hundred and eight thousand total revenue and that we projected we were gonna spend a hundred thousand of it. That's where that three hundred and eight thousand comes from. I just hadn't had the projection for that fund.
So that's really.
It's gonna be less.
It's a placeholder. Any more questions? Phillips, Councilman Borman?
No, I'm good.
Councilwoman Harris?
So all I need is a, a motion to set the public hearing.
So we're looking for a motion to set the public hearing for the 2021 proposed budget at the Monday, March first, 2020 meeting?
June first.
Y'all don't make me talk all night. All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Borman?
Aye.
Councilman Phillips?
You're muted.
Just hold your thumb up. I see you.
Yeah. Aye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tara. We appreciate it. Next up will be our Stormwater Project Contract, John Mashawn, our Stormwater guy. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I'll be brief here, but just to recap, we did receive the bids on the Second and Third Street Stormwater Drain Improvements. We talked about that, those two projects previously when we had the Stormwater Overview previously in the year. And I had estimated seventy thousand dollars for each of those for a total of one hundred and forty. And you can see from the agenda item that we came in at a hundred and eight, one fifty, the low bidder did. So that was a, a good thing. And in addition to replacing the pipe and the, and the, all the infrastructure catchbasins on those two streets, which have had problems in the past, it would also include abandoning an, an older pipe that has also had a number of issues and continues to have issues that crosses private property there. But obviously, the, the two, and there might be more, the two issues associated with this right now is the unknown revenues. Typically, what we would do if this is a planned project and there was enough funding, approved funding from council, we would have moved on this. But in the circumstance, Hiram thought it'd be best to bring it to the council now because of the expenditure, obviously, of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. And the, also in the timing of it, which is not too good. Start date for construction being a couple of weeks out from now, if it's approved. And then a three-week window, which puts us to the end of May, first week in June, doing construction on Second, Third Street and, and East North Shore. Not ideal at all, obviously. But doable and we would mitigate as much as possible any impact on any, any, anybody in that area. But again, it's, do we do it now or do we wait and do it in the fall?
Yeah, essentially, we want to make sure that even though y'all approved the, the money earlier, we want to make sure you're still okay with it, given the current circumstances.
Tara stepped out, but I mean.
We approved the transfer before, yeah. So the, there's money there currently. But, you know, given everything that's going on, just want to make sure you're okay with us still moving forward with this project.
My view is we ought to do this before the hurricane season, not after the hurricane season. And this also includes that hole in the ground on North Shore, East North Shore that.
That's correct.
Is, is.
That'd be replaced.
Clearly marked by a cone right now.
Any other discussion?
I think we should, we should go ahead and award this and go ahead with the project now. Hopefully, it can be done a little sooner than later. I, I don't want to hold up any stormwater project. And if it's an inconvenience to some, well, you know, I, I think most people, at least the property owners, would be glad to see this, their stormwater problems fixed.
Councilwoman Harris, you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Councilman Borman, Councilman Phillips?
When would the work be done? I, I missed the dates on it.
Right now, they're committing to starting construction within two weeks and completing construction no longer than three weeks. So the way, I'm looking that, hopefully, we would finish by the end of the month. But it could trickle over into final seeding and things of that nature could go into the first week in June. But we would do everything possible to try to get most of the major construction work done as soon as possible.
Any, any chance they start a little sooner?
I'll, we'll push as, as much as possible to get them out there.
All right, if there's no more discussion, then I'll be looking for a motion that we will hire J.P. Russ and Sons for the amount of one oh eight, one fifty. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Councilman Corbett?
Aye.
Councilman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Borman?
Aye.
Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
All right, next, moving on to the new business. First up, we have the, be the Chief Paul Hossenmeyer, Fire Department Rescue Boat.
All right, this, in your packet, I gave you kind of an explanation of what's going on. For brevity, I'm not gonna read that whole thing again. The boat's almost ten years old. It's a rigid hull inflatable. We could start seeing issues with that, that boat over time, delaminating and so forth. I'm familiar with that type of boat from Northern Ohio and, and working on them. I'm familiar with that type of boat from Northern Ohio and, and working on them, uh, on other jobs. Uh, Deputy Chief Childers talked to, uh, some repair guys, manufacturers of that. So one of the challenges is the bolt hull, hull itself starting to get older. Uh, it's, it's still okay for now, but our motor burned up. Uh, we tried to get it fixed, and the repairs outweighed the cost benefits of fixing it, uh, due to the cost and the age, so, uh, we've got a couple of different options. The, the most cost-effective option for us is to repower our current boat with a motor that, at some point in the next year or two, three, depending on the, our capital plan of purchasing a new boat, uh, we could, we could move that motor over to a new boat down the line as well. But the bottom line, right now, currently, we can't fix our current motor, and we don't have a boat.
So my question is, the problems you identified on the boat itself, uh, are repairable or?
It's okay for now, but, um, I've talked to several different people in my experiences. It's not to say, and, and maybe Councilman Phillips can add in too, because I think he's familiar with the type of boat we have. It, it could be a month from now, and one of those tubes on the inflatable part could go out. And, and the manufacturer of our boat is no longer in business, so we'd have to try to find, basically, a private company to fix that tube, or we could be dead in the water again. So it could, but it could also last us another year or two, like, is the, is the hopeful plan. Uh, and then we look at getting a new boat, boat hull, and moving, uh, new, moving a new motor over. You know, the, the bigger option is to replace the boat and the motor at the same time, but then we're looking closer to forty thousand dollars compared to a motor right now's, you know, less than, less than ten thousand.
Well, we, can't put a price on safety. If we need a water rescue and don't have the equipment to do it, uh, then I think we're in trouble, or someone is in trouble. Uh, the person that needs rescuing. With the financial picture for next year, I can't see purchasing the boat now. But I think it would be the right move to go ahead and replace the motor, especially since when we do get a new boat, one to three years down the road, uh, we can move that motor over. And, uh, I, I do have one question. When you go out at low tide, and when I, when I went out, uh, in that same boat, to, uh, look at the dredging issues, and we scraped the bottom, and matter of fact, uh, one time, little Dustin Graham was there, and, uh, he had to take a pole and push us into water that we could move in. So does that have anything to do with the repair, or, or the wear and tear on the engine?
Yeah, the, the title changes are certainly challenging. Uh, we, we debated over the last couple of weeks of, of looking for a flat-bottom boat, but then we wouldn't be able to get it out through Little River Inlet and out in the ocean. Uh, a bigger boat wouldn't work in, through the creeks and, and inlets, uh, where, you know, even Bonaparte Creek and, and Tubbs Inlet through there at title changes. You know, when, when you're pushing sand with a motor, that, that's hard on it. The, the firemen and officers on the fire department, they're, they're pretty good and very knowledgeable of the title changes, and everybody watches the charts. Um, but also, if somebody's in trouble, then they try to find a way to get through. And as you mentioned, you know, sometimes try to pull the motor up and push your way through. Uh, we've had to leave the boat overnight, uh, on the backside of Palm Cove i- in the past, because of the, the tide was going down. Uh, after they, they saved somebody in kayaks, got them to the shore, and left the boat overnight, so we didn't have to push through sand. Um, that, that's, is that a reality of, yeah, just the area we're in and the title changes and? There's not one boat or one vessel that solves all the challenges of the ICW, the creeks, the canals, uh, surf, surf launching, and, you know, being out a mile or two or three or five. So that's, that's one of our challenges, too. We've got a jet ski and, and, and a boat, well, part of, we got a boat without a motor right now. So those are, those are challenges, yes, it, it all comes into play.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
If I may, real quick?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Jamie.
I'd like to, uh, let the chief and deputy chief know how much I appreciate the background work they've done in this. Um, I've worked on these types of vessels myself. Um, the sponsors, all of the overtime, they do start to degrade, and the glue will come undone on them. Um, when you're looking at different types of vessels, a skip or things like that, if you're looking at operating rough weather, which I can imagine very often times, repercussions to things happen in rough weather, a ready-hole inflatable boat or a RIB is definitely the way to go. Um, I, I would suggest, from my perspective, working with boats and things like that, the most cost-effective route at this point is to go with the replacement motor. Um, if, and if that being said, if in six months or a year, um, the boat itself has issues with the sponsors, changing that motor to a newer vessel at that time can be done relatively easy. Um, in fact, as unhandy as I am, I've done it myself on, on a couple of different vessels. So that would be my suggestion at this point, is to go with the replacement motor. And then, uh, hopefully, we can make it a year or two before we have to replace the rest of the vessel.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Thank you, Jamie. Anybody else?
What, what type of motor is it, chief?
Uh, this will be, uh, a ninety horsepower outboard.
Made by who?
Uh, we'll have to get some different bids. Uh, in, in the past, uh, this department's had Yamaha, there's a local Yamaha dealer. But we'll have to get some different prices, but, um, ninety horsepower is what we want to do, so that way, whether we get sixteen or eighteen-foot hull on the next one, it, it'll work either way for us.
No, I want to tell about the Yamaha, that, that's a good choice, I think.
Agreed.
Anyone else? Anything else? Alright, on this one, Hiram, do we need a motion, or are we just going to go ahead and let him start reaching forward and then come back with prices, or what do we need to do?
He doesn't need to come back to y'all with the prices, he just needs permission to do this, so I mean, motions of proceed.
Looking for a motion to receive this from, uh, Chief Haslemeyer about the ninety horsepower engine, which should not exceed ten thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
I move that we direct, oh, go ahead, Jamie.
Go ahead, Jamie.
I was just going to say so moved.
Second. All in favor? Councilman Corbett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Nern?
Aye.
Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
Councilman Borman?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to the next. This will be our fire prevention and safety grant. And Chief Pa- Paul, you have the floor again.
Alright, this one's typically annual grant application. It's a ninety-five percent, uh, match funded by FEMA, and a five percent match from the town, and, and we would incorporate that, incorporate that into our, our budget if we were awarded. Um, but it'll be several months before we know. Uh, basically, I'm asking permission to write a grant for, uh, somewhere around approximately five hundred smoke alarms in the amount of about ten thousand dollars, uh, to use within the residential occupancies in the Sunset Beach Fire District.
About how long would five hundred smoke alarms last us here in terms of helping people replace them that can't do it themselves?
Um, I don't know, we'll probably burn through them in a year.
Okay.
Because what would happen is, I'd, with, within the grant application, I'm going to have to put together a plan, which I've already done elsewhere, so I have a plan, and doing, uh, smoke alarm blitzes and door-to-door and checking places and, um, hopefully, we can incorporate some lithium-ion battery ones, but also some wired ones to be able to plug-and-play, replace for people. Uh, so, a year or better, but that, that would put us all in a better spot.
Do I have any more discussion?
This is something that we have done in the past?
No. I don't, I don't think this particular grant's ever been applied for by Sunset Beach.
Yeah, but the idea is they pay ninety-five percent, ninety-five hundred dollars, and if we get it, then we pay five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's sim- it's a similar platform through, uh, like the Assistance to Firefighters Grant that you approved me to write a grant for before, or, uh, in January. Um, just another grant opportunity to get funded heavily from FEMA potentially.
So, so do we normally replace the, uh, smoke alarms in, in the residences here in the, in Sunset Beach?
A lot of times, w- well, right now, we're slowed down a little bit, so we're not sending guys out to houses unless they have a audible smoke alarm chirping or something, but we're, we change batteries, uh, smoke alarms. If, if people can purchase those items on their own, uh, we certainly encourage it, but we have, we have some, some available currently, and this would give us a, a much larger cache of smoke alarms to, to help people out.
Anyone else?
I think it's a no-brainer. Uh, fi- um, five hundred, and we reap ninety-five hundred.
Virtually a dollar a piece, so.
I still, I still have to write the grant, it has to get awarded, but.
So, so your performance evaluation would be based on how successful you are in writing grants? Sounds good to me.
Do my best.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Councilman Corbett?
Aye.
Councilman Nern?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
And Councilman Borman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for clarity, the motion is to proceed for the grant.
Grant, to write the grant, yeah. He's not about to talk me out tonight. Alright, next up, we have the resolution adopting the Americans with Disability Acts policies, programs, and transition plan. And Mr. Hiram Marzian, our town administrator, this is yours.
Yes, sir, um, as I've mentioned over the last few months, we've been working on the transition plan, uh, for the last year. Uh, this is something that's required for us to have. Uh, so what we've done here is we've taken the inventory of the town's, um, physical infrastructures, uh, vertical and, um, pathways, and developed a transition plan for when they should be repaired or updated. Uh, given that this was also created prior to any setbacks with, um, funding from the pandemic, most of this was, work would have been taking place in FY twenty-one and twenty-two. So another year out further from this. But I've given y'all the, the complete plan in here, along with required, um, policy that needs to be adopted by the town, and a grievance policy adopted by the town, and designation of ADA coordinators, myself and the chief building inspector. And that's pretty much this in a nutshell.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Is this mandated?
Yes.
Alright, is there a date where, by which we have to be in compliance?
Um, well, we have to have a transition plan, that's just the interpretation of the Dis- Americans with Disabilities Act. But we have to have this because we receive funding from the state and the federal government for roads and whatnot, and DOT requires us to have it as soon as possible. But we're also required to have, we, we already had these policy, uh, policies, the grievance policy, and all that, we would have fallen under the Americans with Disabilities Act, but having a locally adopted plan is now required. But as far as indicating that we're out of compliance, we're not out of compliance. There's just a few infrastructure things that were okay when they were built, not okay anymore. Uh, don't like the term grandfathering, but that's basically what it is. So the next time we do a renovation project or something, we would tie these into those things, so we can go ahead and improve those facilities.
Do, do we have a cost?
No, sir. Those, those would all be determined at the time we decided to go through and plan it and budget. The, the transition plan doesn't have to be completed. The, we can update and extend that timeline further out. Like I said, all the facilities were in compliance at the time, and that's all that matters. Anything that wasn't in compliance, however, we would have to fix immediately, and those things have already been fixed.
My, my personal opinion is that, uh, we should come into compliance as soon as possible.
I would like to remind, just for everybody watching this, thinking that, you know, the, the, the pieces that are non-compliant now were compliant, compliances change, so even if we bring these into facility compliance, there may still be updates later in the future. So this is an evolving plan.
Okay.
But nothing would be happening next year since we've canceled capital projects.
Do we have access to qualified signers?
Uh, the county does, and we would have to contact, um, social services, I believe, is the department.
Does this require us to have any language translators?
Uh, no, uh, but we can also contact for those as well.
Councilman Borman, Council Phillips, or Councilman Harris, does anybody have anything they'd like to add or any questions?
No.
Just a question for me, Hiram. On, uh, page eighteen of the plan, it talks about private ownership. So is that?
Hang on.
Page eighteen of the plan, page eighty-three of the packet.
Thank you. Yeah, we went ahead and, um, marked these down as just for, for awareness, we're not responsible for their upgrades. Um, at the time that they would have to pull a building permit for something that would change something here, we would require the upgrade.
So if it's something that's in your plan, and if they don't do it, what happens?
Uh, not much, this is just for general awareness for us to make, to, to know that there's, there's things out there that we need to keep an eye on. But like I said, um, for instance, the, if they ever do update their sidewalks for any purpose, um, they would have to put the detectable strips in anyway. Uh, we would just make sure and check it off of our list here. This is to keep us aware of those kind of things when they come in for permits.
Okay.
Anything else? Alright, for that, do we, we'll look to a motion to approve and adopt the following resolutions? The resolution for the Town of Sunset Beach American with Disabilities Acts policies, programs, and transition plan, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Councilman Nern?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
Councilman Corbett?
Aye.
Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
And Councilman Borman?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, I'd also like to point out real quick that we'll do a self-evaluation annually on this, uh, to see where we're at. And that'll be updated in the plan every time we do it.
Alright, thank you. Moving on, our next up is the discussion on airboats, and, uh, Councilman Phillips, you've requested this, you have the floor.
Excuse me. So, um, recently, we've had, um, someone with an airboat come into the community, and I can assure you, as soon as this individual, um, arrives, very shortly thereafter, the complaints start coming in. So I've gotten them from a number of citizens, phone calls, emails, things of that, sug- of that, that nature. Me personally, I've witnessed this vessel, um, on the ICW, surrounded by three jet skis, moving at basically top speed, and I couldn't even hear one of the jet skis because of the noise of this, this vessel. So a lot of the complaints are regarding the operation time of the vessel. Um, it's operated between nine and eleven at night, between four and five in the morning. Um, it's been, uh, people have told me that it's been sitting idle at early times in the morning, between four and five, and just idling for the hour. Um, and pretty much, as I stated, anytime this vessel is nearby, um, I can be assured to get some, uh, notification from our citizens. So what I've done is I went through and looked at the state statutes, the general statutes from Louisiana to Delaware. So what I've done is I went through and looked at the state statutes, the general statutes from Louisiana to Delaware, and those are provided in the agenda packet. Then I went back and looked at county statutes and then parish statutes, and then eventually down to city statutes. So, um, you can see, if you look through the packet, that there are several different options for out there. So I have some options listed such as ban them outright, limit the time of day of operation, place restrictions based on location to residences to include idle speed requirement and/or limit motor RPM within a half mile of occupied residences, limit operation based on fresh or saltwater location, restrict the exhaust on the motor, it must comply with town noise ordinances, limit the size of the engine and/or to restrict operation based on tidal flow. So these are all things that other municipalities, counties, or states have put in place. So what I'd like to do is reach out to the other council members, um, ask them to review this, uh, to look at them and see if any of these options they would be worth, or would consider, um, for, for use here in Sunset Beach, uh, to be then sent off to Grady, uh, to review to see if they would be applicable within the state of North Carolina. So from my perspective, I would like to consider any and all of these options as potential ways to remediate the situation. So, um, at this point, I guess I'd like to turn it over to the other members and just see what their thoughts are.
Well, I can comment on it. I.
Councilwoman Boorman, go ahead.
Um, I really appreciate the, the, uh, work that, uh, uh, the Councilman Phillips, um, put into this, and I have witnessed that boat coming down the feeder canal at ten o'clock at night with, uh, bank of lights that would, uh, that, that lights the whole place up. It's like having a small airplane land in your backyard. It, it's extremely noisy. The owner, uh, uh, does not seem to appreciate the fact that at that time of night, um, it's very disturbing. My big question is what authority we would have to enforce something like that? Because I, I would love to see that, uh, there's a restriction both on the exhaust, uh, the time of day that it can operate. My question is also, what does he need that type of vessel for around here? I mean, it's meant for, uh, running in the wetlands, and I'm not sure that he's really using it for that here. It seems, when I've seen him, he's, he's, he's been running up and down Jinx Creek, um, at high speeds. So I don't know what he even needs a boat like that for, but. So I would be in favor of, uh, seeing what, uh, could be done legally to enforce some restriction on its use, both time of day, uh, uh, the amount of noise, uh, that it generates as well.
Is the, uh, item number one was the ban it outright. Is that really something that we can do?
Grady question. I don't have any idea. Um, as far as I know, that's covered by state agencies, not local municipalities.
Having, having said that, Jamie, I appreciate the information you put together, and, and my answer is if we can't ban it outright, uh, take care of all years number two through seven, and, and there were a couple other items that were listed out there that other states were doing that, uh, made sure those things got covered too. I would, uh, tighten it up as about as tight as we could in terms of where they could operate, when they could operate, how, what kind of speeds, et cetera.
I'll get you next, Council.
You done?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, no, no problem, no problem. Councilwoman Harris, go ahead.
Yes, I just have a question, I guess of Jamie. Uh, did they, I can hear that boat from my house, and I live on Blaine Creek, uh, so it's a good distance away from me, and it wakes me up at night. So, um, but my question is, does this type of boat do any damage to our estuaries? Because this is a, a, a sensitive fragile area that this boat is traveling in, uh, back behind our island.
I do believe, um, if I recall correctly, that there was one, say, it might have been Alabama that, that had things in there because, uh, they couldn't operate in a nature conservancy area or things of that nature. Um, one other thing, back to the noise as well, um, I believe our desk below is an A-level weighted scale. Uh, now, I don't have an A-weighted scale. I just have straight cross-the-line scale. Um, downloaded an app for it, and from over a mile away, this vessel is pushing sixty decibels, um, from a mile away. Um, I've also heard, uh, the same vessel operating in the waterways while at town hall, so it definitely does not just affect, uh, the people along the waterway. I've gotten complaints from numerous people. Um, but I do think that the avenue of seeing if it was, would damage, uh, the environment might, as I think some areas have done, might be a way to look as well.
If, if I could add, there, there were a couple of the states, I think it was just more, there was more than one where they were clearly talking about the, uh, the wetlands, and, and if we did permit this thing, I think we would really have to tightly delineate the areas where it could and could not go. And, and any of our wetlands outside of the, sort of the main creek areas, I think would be prescribed.
Well, uh.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
John, John and Jan took my questions. Uh, but with that being said, I, I'm not sure about an outright ban. Um, it might be harder to get. But two through seven, uh, I, I absolutely agree with. And I, I've only had, uh, I think it's three emails, maybe four, uh, about this, but I've heard it in discussions among small groups of people, and, uh, you know, I can't hear it from my house, but I wouldn't want to be awakened by it. So as far as I'm concerned, we can go ahead and, and, uh, seek ways to implement two through seven, and it, and if it's easier to do number one, ban outright, then we go for it.
So what do you want us to do? Send us our suggestions to you so you can?
If you'd like to do that, you can send suggestions to me, um, and then what I'd like to do is send, um, at least, you know, that, you know, definitely we're in support of two through seven. I understand number one might be hard to achieve, um, but I think that would be the, the most appropriate, quite honestly. Um, I'd like to get these to Hiram for his, or not Hiram, to, uh, Grady Richardson for his review, uh, to see what would be applicable within the state of North Carolina, um, and within, within our, uh, city, basically, in our town.
Do we need, uh, a council vote to send this to Grady?
No, you just need to send it to me so I can send it to Grady.
Okay.
You'll just transfer that to Hiram, then he will forward it to Grady?
That sounds great.
Okay.
And then he'll come back with his opinion on it before y'all look at ordinance creation.
He'll come back and go through that if you didn't hear that, Jamie. He'll look at it and see where we at. Okay, anybody else got any, anything else right there in regards to this? Thank you, Jamie.
Yes, thank y'all.
Moving on is our, uh, disposition of directives for the May nineteenth meeting. If I'm not mistaken, we said that on six one, we would be looking at some more about the events and things?
Events and town hall.
Yeah, okay, so we got that down for the, the six one meeting?
Yep. Uh, we also have the, uh, public hearing for six one for the budget.
Yep.
But we're not required to discuss it that night. We can just have the public hearing if y'all want to.
Here, okay. Anything else?
Lisa? Anything else for the nineteenth or?
We put the airboats on there as a placeholder.
Yeah, put the airboats as a placeholder, but we'll have to wait for Grady. Yeah.
What was the second? Did you, did you have something about the? The public hearing was one of them on six one, oh, six one, and also the town hall and the upcoming events. After June, special events, the six one would be when it is.
Would we want to have somewhere in there, just, if nothing else, just a discussion of where we stand on our, uh, restrictions?
Yes, sir. That'll be on the, on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
We'll look at everything and discuss how the governor's been doing, see where we're at at that time.
Tweak anything, make it a better.
I think that would be.
When we get the public comments, I'll bring it back.
All right, with that being said, is there anything else? From there, y'all have anything? Councilman Boorman, Phillips, Harris?
No, sir.
I need a break.
One, one second, we're almost finished. We just have a couple, one more time.
I know, I know.
Okay. All right, next up will be our public comments time. Do we have somebody in the back that would like to speak? Uh, we'll recognize them with their name and their address, please.
Can you folks hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I haven't seen the final budget numbers yet, so I'm assuming that it'll be a smart budget, which I wish to thank you, the Finance Director, Tara Trob, and the Council for eliminating many of the unnecessary expenditures that were initially proposed in the fiscal year twenty-one budget. The fiscal prudence that you have demonstrated during this pandemic will avoid the town repeating the same fiscal errors made during the years of the financial crisis, causing the sudden fifty-two percent tax hike in two thousand and fifteen. This pandemic should be a wake-up call for all. You have maintained basic services, and you've done the right thing. Although my budget-winning letter dated four seventeen twenty was not written to the record like the other letters promised by the town, it is obvious that you read it, and I appreciate, and I appreciate that. Thank all of you. I have a couple of minor concerns. The proposed budget calls for twenty-seven thousand dollars in bonuses, despite the fact that previous council and the administration unanimously implemented a pay-for-performance system. The background information is in my previous letter. Which is it going to be? What message do you intend to send the employees? Conventional wage and salary standards are simple. If you have a merit-based system, you do not couple the program by having a bonuses for all. Moreover, merit-based systems are more meaningful by recognizing individual performance and restores employee pride. Option one, to preserve the integrity of the merit-based system, the twenty thousand, or the twenty-seven thousand dollars should be allocated for bonus, for, for the bonuses should be added to the planned three percent pay-for-performance increases. In other words, from three to three point five percent. This will enable superior performers to receive more than three percent and will also improve their pension payments in later years.
Excuse me, thirty seconds.
Uh, who said that?
I got, I got Councilman Nern running the clock for me from where I read earlier. You have, you have thirty seconds left.
Yeah, Mr. Nern, you don't run the meeting. It's not y'all meeting, it's the mayor's.
Sir, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. He was just giving you thing like I would be doing if I was running. You have thirty minutes left, thirty seconds left, I apologize.
Actually, he's got eight seconds left.
As you know, I also provided the public record history regarding the fire fee. You have the background information. Councilman Nern recently stated that we never practice revenue neutral.
Sir, please refrain from using the names. We, we, we've read that, I've, I've been.
The council recently stated that we never practice revenue neutral. This is not correct. When property assessments were recalculated every four years by the county, you will discover that revenue neutrality has been practiced by the county, Sunset Beach, and other towns.
Sir, your time's up, sir. I'm, I'm sorry, but your, your three minutes is up, sir. I apologize.
Uh, I can't hear you.
The three minutes is up? I just, I just got the back of the timer. Thank you, thank you for your comments, sir. Next up, we have, um, we have two more that I'll read in the public comments that were sent in. This was, uh, Mr. James Thompson, six eleven Live Oak Drive. "We need to clean up lots in our neighborhood, whether or not a trailer is on it or not. Otherwise, people that visit Sunset Beach are going to say, 'Look at the nasty neighborhood at the beach and look at the Myrtle Beach, and look at Myrtle Beach. It looks great compared to us.' We'll never be a all-American city or town. Thanks." And next up is a Mrs. Elaine Strini, seven six four five High Market Street, Sunset Beach. "My question for the council would be one of liability regarding the placement of sand on Ocean Isle Beach. Should the placement be ca, be the cause of any problems in the future? If I recall correctly, this was touched on at a previous council meeting as a possi, possible problem." Thank you. And that concludes, unless there's another one, I don't think there is. I think that concludes the public comments time. So next up, unless there's anything else that needs to be discussed or, or mentioned here, uh, I'll be asking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Councilman Corbett?
Aye.
Councilman Boorman?
Aye.
Councilman Phillips?
Wake up, Jamie, wake up, Jamie.
Oh, my God.
Again with the mute. Aye.
Councilwoman Harris?
Aye.
And Councilman Nern?
I might have another question. No, aye.
Thank y'all. For everybody that joined us, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.